So this device.
I don't think I'm.
Thank you for dancing.
Welcome to the radio.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're on the fun side.
Yeah. Thanks.
First meeting.
Glad to see you all.
All.
My. Yeah. We.
They know usually whatever they have is usually sitting back. I don't think because that was much higher. We're going to be a bigger job. So whatever, whatever that's there.
That's what I'm hearing. Nothing I get. Accurate relation.
Oh, my dear. It's not over.
Anything barriers? No. Fire those or what? Yeah. It's a. It's a. Well, we've. Yeah. Every time I pick up a nice pen. It's a responsibility, isn't it? I was. The. Do you have any ideas? I'm even more sorry to speak. Um.
If you don't have to. Yeah.
What do you want? You want? If you have. Hello. Great. How are you? Hey, how are you? Good to see you after the weekend.
Hi. Hey, how's it going? How we doing again? It was busy. How about you guys? It was fun. It was good. Oh, good, Jill. I don't know if he gave me my number, but also if I can get together with you guys and like, find out like what kind of gold you want so I can. My motion. Yeah. It's always nice to get a student voice. Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Lots of candle.
Thank you. Awesome. Perfect. Thank you. Good to hear you. Oh, you know what? I know. I hope we do it someday, but I don't know if everybody eats fish. I know. Let's see. I think there's only one person who's afraid who can't eat fish. I think it's Bob. Bob, you can't eat any fish, right? Or the shrimp.
Crustacean.
Crustaceans. Yeah. Yeah. So crustaceans. Yeah. Yeah. But it is like half and half.
That's right. Yeah. So we're going to be doing our little prayer commission.
Right.
For you two. And so right after the one retreat's finished, we'll just do a quick picture. Okay?
Okay.
I'm just going to be like three of you and then myself. Please.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
You guys know.
I am. I'm going to try to take some pictures of you guys doing your little ceremony thing. Also, um, if you can send me a text with your. Yeah. So I can save it and then I'll send it by text. Sure. Your phone number. Five one nine. Five one nine. Five seven three. Seven eight two nine. I'm going to shut off my ringer. You can put like student trustee at the bottom. So like your name and then underneath student trustee and I'll save it. Thank you. Yeah. No worries. I'm not hijacking this. I'll give it back. I'm just trying to figure out where to put my purse. Maybe I'll put it like here and then if you need it in your. Sure. Yeah. You're all good. Thank you.
Secondly, the chair of Western nations to move together. So even though your names are just.
Just say our names.
So I mean. Oh, yeah. I'll have it for sure.
Yeah. Whatever you choose, but I like to do it every year.
Pick it up or was it pretty good?
And we have joining us, Richard Olson, who's going to help us with blessing and declaration of oath of newly appointed student trustees and commissioning of Superintendent Eby. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you. Friends, let's pray together in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. The Lord be with you. Thank you for the invitation to come and pray with you briefly this morning to assist with the blessing of our two new student trustees and our newest superintendent. At this point, I'd like to ask for any memorials or intentions? Yes?
I would like to send out intentions for some of the victims in the United States have been dying from violence. The young girl on the train and also Charlie Kirk, who was a faithful man and was not ashamed of his faith, and also encouraged civil dialogue. And I think that it's a reminder to all of us to love our enemies and engage with each other in conversation in a peaceful manner and to not be ashamed of our faith and move forward in love and respect.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just to follow up on that, I think we should also acknowledge the shootings that were at the Annunciation School in Minneapolis, the two young Catholic children who were shot, not while they were praying, but because they were praying. And then even beyond that, there's martyrs that have been happening all around the world that we never hear about in the media in countries like Nigeria and Syria. I think that we have to always remember that we are lucky in this country to be able to practice our faith. And it's a gift and something that we have to always be very thankful for. Thanks.
Seeing no other intentions, let us pray. Loving God, you have called servants to lead your people in every age, from the prophets and holy women and men in ancient times to all the baptized who make up the body of Christ in our world today. Teach us always to listen to your voice, to discern your will for our lives and to faithfully serve the students and families of the Waterloo Catholic District School Board. We ask this through our Lord and brother, Jesus Christ, who loves us, died for us, and leaves us onwards to abundant life. Amen. I'd like to invite Trustee Francis to come forward and proclaim the gospel.
Gospel according to Saint Matthew. Jesus went about all the cities and villages, teaching in their synagogues and proclaiming the good news of the kingdom and curing every disease and every sickness. When he saw the crowds, he had compassion for them because they were harassed and helpless, like sheep without a shepherd. Then he said to his disciples, "The harvest is plentiful, but the laborers are few. Therefore, ask the Lord of the harvest to send out the laborers into his harvest." The gospel of the Lord.
Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ. And at this time, I'd like to invite our board chair and vice chair to light the special candles from the Christ candle at the center and present them to our student trustees and to our newest superintendent. Jesus said to his disciples, "I am the light of the world; whoever follows me will not walk in darkness, but will have the light of life." So Patrick, Rebecca, and Jace, receive the light of Christ as an outward sign of the responsibility you demonstrate in your leadership roles to bear witness to our Catholic faith, to know Jesus Christ, and to follow him in leading others. So I'm going to invite Rebecca and Jace to stand. Holy Spirit of goodness and truth, you ignite our lives with the flame of faith. As you descended upon the first disciples in the upper room, we ask that you rest upon your servants, Rebecca and Jace. Give them the wisdom to be good listeners, to be active servants, that they might lift up the voices and the needs of the students of the Waterloo Catholic District School Board. In doing so, may they become joyful witnesses in the building of the Kingdom of God, inaugurated and brought to life in Christ Jesus, our Lord. Rebecca and Jace, may Almighty God bless you in the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. You may be seated. And I'll ask Superintendent Patrick Eby to stand, please. Oh, Holy Spirit, giver of gifts, author of wisdom, as you hovered over the waters in the time of creation, we ask that you descend upon your servant, Patrick. Bless him with a discerning mind and a listening heart. Inspire him to be a faithful senior leader in the Waterloo Catholic District School Board in all he says and all he does. And so, Patrick, may Almighty God bless you in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. And you may be seated. To conclude our prayer, let us together express the longing for the kingdom with the prayer that Jesus, the master teacher, gave to us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Loving Father, you have called laborers into your vineyard. You have gifted Catholic education with servants who dare to lead. Guide all of us in the way of truth. Bring us to the fullness of life. Make us joyful messengers of challenging proposals, ever faithful to our Lord and teacher, Jesus Christ. Amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit.
Okay, now if I could ask Rebecca and Jace to please read your oath.
I, Rebecca Gerlalmetto, do solemnly declare that I am not disqualified under any act from being a member of the Waterloo Catholic District School Board. I will truly, faithfully, impartially, do the best of my ability to execute the office of the board member. And I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or other undue execution of said office. And that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I, Rebecca Gerlalmetto, do swear that I will faithfully and bear due allegiance to His Majesty King Charles III.
Thank you. And give a round of applause. Thank you very much. Hey, thank you, everyone, for your patience. We'll continue on with our meeting now. The territorial acknowledgement. I would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally cared for by the Haudenosaunee and Ichnabe and Nootro people. I also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge, laws, and philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. Now we'll move to 1.3, approval of the agenda. We have a slight amendment to the agenda. We're going to move item 5.4, Holy Rosary CES French immersion. We're going to move that up and do that ahead of 5.1. So if I could get a mover of the amended agenda. Okay, Trustee Stanley and Trustee Sikora. Do we have consensus? Thank you very much. Moving to 1.4, Declaration of Pecuniary Interest. Is there any pecuniary interest from the current meeting or from a previous public or in-camera meeting? Seeing none. Moving to items for action. Moving to three, consent agenda. So I'd like to have a mover of the approval of the minutes of regular and special meetings. So for item 3.1.1, Board of Trustees' Minutes, June 23rd, and the Special Board of Trustees' Minutes, September 8th, 2025. And the 3.2, CAC Minutes of June 10th, 2025. Can I get a mover of those, a mover of that? Trustee Wyler and Trustee Sikora? Sorry, did you get me there? Trustee Wyler and Trustee Sikora? Okay. Do we have consensus? Okay, thank you very much. Moving to 3.3, Governance Minutes of September 8th. Could I get a member of the Governance Committee to move that, we approve those minutes? Trustee Dory Masters and Trustee Wyler? Okay, do we have consensus? Okay, thank you very much. Item 3.4, Governance Minutes. So approving of recommendations. Can I get a mover of that for the approval? Trustee Sikora and Trustee Karen? Do we have consensus? Okay. What is the what is the item that is causing the non-consensus?
As far as the changes to the Code of Conduct, I feel that there's no language in there that allows the public to make anomalous complaints if they feel fit. There has been many situations that have come forward to my attention that have been anomalous from staff members, students, or even parents who felt fear of speaking their mind or talking about what is going on in schools because they felt there's going to be repercussion. And though I support the fact that we have protocols that we follow and I definitely encourage them, I feel that the language does not promote transparency in our school board. And especially when we have the Minister of Education, who's concerned about transparency. Limit, the language used is very concerning to me because there's nothing in there that says it is, that it encourages or allows the public to make those complaints. And I think that the fact that when those complaints come in and that they're investigated to make sure that they're deemed factual, I don't see any reason why there should be any issues because if it's a fact, then everything should be investigated that is factual.
Trustee Wyler?
Thanks. I'd just like to call a point of order because the item before us is just the approval of recommendations, which was to bring the Code of Conduct forward to the board. Discussion on the Code of Conduct is later under 10.2, where we can have a more fulsome discussion.
Yes, that's correct. And Trace, Trustee Wyler, could you find that recommendation perhaps and just read it out for the groups that we are on the same page?
Sure, absolutely. Just let me find it in the minutes here. 13? 15? Give me a moment here to go to page 15. So the recommendation under item seven was, it was moved by Trustee Gurren and seconded by Trustee Craft that the Governance Committee recommends bringing Board Policy 2007, Code of Forward to the Board Meeting for Approval, carried by consensus. So that's the recommendation that we're approving under this item.
In this case, I know we're having a discussion later for it, and that's great. As it stands right now, I would like a recorded vote.
Okay. All in favor of approving the Governance Minutes as outlined in the Approver Recommendations? Sorry, the Governance Committee?
I'm confused because that is the usual recommendation that we were making in Governance when we brought it forward. And then Board of Trustees actually approved it at that point. So if we're having the discussion later, we shouldn't be having the vote now. That's like voting on the same issue twice in one meeting. No, the recommendation has already been approved by the Governance Committee that they have brought forward per their minutes. If we are having a discussion later at 10.2, then we shouldn't be approving it right now. That approval is at 10.2. We don't approve their recommendation. They approve their recommendation. We approve the acceptance of that policy.
Okay, so going back to what we are actually approving, what we're approving here is that we agreed to bring this to the board for discussion. So that's what we're approving here. So we're not approving any of the content. We're just agreeing to approve that we're discussing the Code of Conduct.
I'm not on the Governance Committee, so I, we are not the ones who brought it forward to the actual board meeting. That would be the members of the Governance Committee, and they have already given their approval for 3.3. 3.4 is the whole board that actually provides approval to the actual policy, which, if you've split it out to 10.2, then that means 3.4 should not exist. We don't approve the recommendation from the Governance Committee. They approve their recommendation. We approve the final policy change.
Then I think we should Korra.
Similar to other committees, they bring their recommendations to the Board of Trustees. This is a recommendation from the committee being brought forward to us. So we approve recommendations from committees. So this recommendation is not to approve it, it's to bring it forward for approval. Later in our agenda, we have it. We'll be discussing the policy and whether to approve it.
I'm going to say we just need to vote on this and move on. I don't think we're going to agree on the reason why this was brought forward.
My only question is, isn't it sufficient to have voted on approval of minutes? Because by voting on approval of minutes, we're implicitly approving the recommendations of those minutes. So this vote is not even necessary, I don't think.
I don't think that would be the case because we did call it out specifically that it was for approval. So I don't think you could assume that everything else that we have in the meeting would be approved. So unless there's any objection, I think we're kind of going around a little bit as to whether this is necessary or not. I'm going to rely on the advisement of the Governance Chair and a former Governance Committee member to proceed.
You were asking if any of us object. I would second Trustee Cuff's opinion in regards to having it together or even after, like later, closer to the discussion. I think that voting on it twice seems a little bit redundant. I think having the discussion and voting on it, because if we have the discussion and we happen to agree on it, then everything would go forward. Great, right? But I think the discussion is definitely needed here. But that's just my opinion. But if you want to do a vote now, I would be voting against it, a recorded vote.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify the Governance recommendations. So my understanding is that we had had the Governance meeting, which was a meeting of the full board to discuss the item at hand. And then in that, we made a recommendation that we would bring that discussion to this table to have a final discussion of the Code of Conduct. So that's why there's two. We always approve the recommendations coming out of the meeting. So the minutes is one thing, but the recommendation is that it's brought here for final discussion and approval. So that's what's happening at 10.2. So if we're okay in agreement with that, that we're only voting to approve the recommendation, and the recommendation was to bring it here for discussion. Yes?
Just to follow up to your comments, I completely understand exactly what you're saying. The reason why I don't approve the recommendations coming forward is because during our meeting, we had our discussions and our concerns. Some alterations were made to it to address some of those concerns. But I felt that the alterations did not reflect the concerns that I had. That's why I don't recommend it being brought forward until it's further altered to reflect that.
Through you, Madam Chair. So would it be right to move forward from this recommendation, that you approve the recommendation to bring it to this discussion table? And then the discussion would take place at 10.1, addressing some of your concerns?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So that we would approve the recommendation to bring it forward to this table to address, for further discussion? During 10 point, I think it's 10.2?
I would prefer to move it closer to the time that we have the discussion or even defer just until we're all on the same page.
I just found February 24th, the agenda, and the recommendation is very similar. Policy with suggested edits be brought to the February Board Meeting for Approval. And according to the consent agenda, then it was approved twice. One to bring the recommendation forward by the committee and one to approve it by the Board of Trustees. There was no other 10-point whatever. So it was approved once by the Board of Trustees that we approved the recommendations. So the approval of the recommendations here means that we are approving this actual policy. That's what it means. That's what it meant on February 24th. Either we were wrong then or we're wrong now.
We have another case in the, which, on the June 23rd meeting, where we had the exact same scenario. So we had the Governance Minutes approval. And then underneath that, we had Governance Minutes of the same meeting, Approval of Recommendations, which was in regard to the electronic meeting. And then at 10.2, we discussed the electronic meeting for approval. So it was the exact same scenario on the June
You're saying that the previous meetings, you know, such as, sorry, such as February or September, October, the previous year or things like that, we were actually wrong and that we corrected.
I don't know who is wrong or who is right. I'm simply saying that this happened in another instance. So I don't, I don't. We're not going to solve this right now, who's wrong or who's right. Are we, right? Are we going to get out the policy book and start looking? We can look into that for the future. We can certainly look into that for the future so that we don't have this misunderstanding again of how we proceed. But if, I'm concerned if we don't approve the recommendation to bring it forward to the board for discussion, then how can we have the discussion at 10.2?
It's been approved to bring the recommendation to the board by the Governance It's been approved to bring the recommendation to the board by the governance committee. They are the ones who approve that recommendation before the board. The board as a whole then approves the final policy.
If I could offer a suggestion, so we could put a notation in our minutes to say that we were voting that, to take the recommendation, to bring it forward for discussion and approval, and it'll be approved later on in the agenda.
I agree with that suggestion. Trustee Socora, can you assist?
So adding a notation to the minutes, the approval on 3.4 is strictly to bring the policy forward for discussion and not approval at this point in the agenda. It is discussed later. I think that should hopefully clarify how we'll be proceeding.
So then I think what we do is, we've added that notation, that this approving of this recommendation is not the approval of the recommendation itself, but approving so that this will be on the agenda. I think you had said it better. Stephanie, you could repeat that if necessary. Okay, so we're voting, we're voting with that notation. We're going to adjust the minutes to reflect. Voting to approve the recommendation is not approving the code of conduct itself. It's only approving that it will be discussed later on in the agenda. Can I get a mover of this? Okay, Trustee Socora, Trustee Karen, do we have consensus?
A recorded vote?
All in favor of this? And opposed? Kristen, can you clarify your position? Were you in favor or opposed? In favor? Moving on then, we will move on now to 5.4, Holy Rosary CES French Immersion Program Relocation. Shaez.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. So with tonight is Jennifer Passy, our manager of planning. Jennifer is going to go over a report containing information on the French Immersion Program currently at Holy Rosary. Within Jennifer's report, trustees will find a lot of historical information and projected information in terms of the enrollment at the site, capacities, and then some information on St. Nicholas. It's important to note that this is a very preliminary report. Staff will be collecting feedback from the affected school communities, and that feedback will inform any next steps. We are open to any and all feedback, and we'll turn it over to Jennifer, and Jennifer will do a great job, I'm sure, at presenting this information. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you. As I'm sure Shaez mentioned, I apologize, I was trying to get the presentation up. I'm joined this evening by Jennifer Kruhtoff as well, who is our FSL consultant, who may be able to assist if there's any questions that I cannot respond to. So staff is here this evening to present information on the Holy Rosary FI program relocation. As noted in the report, this relocation is, information is being brought forward to the Board of Trustees, and it is different than a boundary review. A boundary review, according to our administrative procedure, follows that AP. This process is exempt from that procedure because it is considered an optional program. Staff have identified that there is a need to relocate the program from Holy Rosary to another school, and that other school has been identified as St. Nicholas due to pressures being experienced at the Holy Rosary School and on the site. There is outlined engagement detailed in the report, which will also be more broadly shared with the community tomorrow. That information has made its way into the community as part of the information that's been shared in the report in the agenda package this evening, and I'll speak to that further towards the end of the presentation. Just in terms of background, FI, the FI program at Holy Rosary has been growing in since 2019, with grades one through seven currently offered at the school. There are currently approximately 141 students enrolled and attending FI at Holy Rosary. Many will recall, if you were around the table at the time, that there was students redirected to Holy Rosary as part of the St. John boundary review, but also a portion of its boundary adjusted and redirected to become part of the St. Nicholas School boundary. And that change took effect in September of 2020. The school and the site are currently challenged to manage the enrollment levels that are currently being experienced. There are currently eight portables on site. We have had to negotiate an off-site parking arrangement to meet the needs of primarily school staff in order to address the current staffing levels. And the concern was raised through the planning for portable accommodation this spring that there should not be more than eight portables accommodated on the property due to concerns about taking away too much place space. So as a result, it was determined that there was a need and an opportunity to relocate some students through this redirection of the French Immersion Program, focused primarily on the ability to relocate the entire program student body to another location, recognizing that that would be in the best interest of those students to move as a whole. As I said, currently, the school is over capacity. There's approximately, as of September, 625 students enrolled. The utilization rate is approximately 136%. And as I noted, currently, those enrollment numbers are being met with eight portables. If no changes were to take place, the status quo projection out to the end of our 10-year forecast period is over 1,000 students. Comparatively, this fall, St. Nicholas has approximately 508 students with a utilization rate of 106% and three portables. It does have, again, significant enrollment forecasted out towards the end of our forecast period. The status quo projection was provided in the staff report and is highlighted for you on the screen. It is noted that the longer-term 1,000 students of forecasted enrollment in 2036 would require theoretically the placement of 23 portables. Comparatively, the projected enrollment at St. Nicholas, based on no changes, would require nine. Of note, however, is the next year forecast at the Holy Rosary School, which would necessitate an additional two portables being added to meet the enrollment growth. Again, this was not advisable. The relocation option to take all students in French Immersion and accommodate them at St. Nicholas effective September 2026 would have the effect of reducing the capacity or reducing the enrollment pressure and the portable necessary to service that student body from eight to two. It is acknowledged that there is additional portables likely required to meet growth again. However, that longer-term matter is something that we would continue to monitor. As this board is aware, and through the presentation of the long-term accommodation plan in the spring, you will have seen information about all of our schools throughout the district and many of those experiencing significant enrollment pressure today and into the future. Staff did look at alternatives for the possible redirection of the French Immersion Program to other sites. However, the location, the redirection to Our Lady of Lords was not deemed feasible due to current pressure and the number of portables on that property. Similarly, we were not able to consider relocation to St. Dominic or St. John. St. Mark is currently approved for an addition. However, the site would be under construction this school year, and as such, wouldn't be appropriate to redirect students to that scenario. And similarly, St. Paul was approved for a addition, which would also be expected to be under construction this school year, and similarly, a construction zone, plus that site is currently accommodating 15 portables. When looking at Holy Rosary and St. Nicholas, we did provide in the staff report some contextual comparison between the sites and their abilities to accommodate more portables longer term. The less than five acres of Holy Rosary, together with topography and the limitations on place space, didn't make it ideal to continue to accommodate more portables. In comparison, St. Nicholas is over seven acres in size, is relatively flat, and staff have explored and identified opportunity to expand parking if required to accommodate more park, additional portable placement. Comparatively, the St. Nicholas site provides additional flexibility for the accommodation of more students. By relocating the program, starting in September 2026, as I'd noted earlier, we do accomplish a reduction in the overall enrollment and associated pressures at Holy Rosary. And while St. Nicholas's enrollment would increase, it is more manageable based on the ability to accommodate portables and based on building design. We've also highlighted the fact that the long-term plan does identify a future capital priority with a new school in the Beaver Creek Meadows area, which would help the board address the longer-term forecast of enrollment. In terms of engagement, the intended communication strategy is that there would be a stakeholder input period between September 24th and October the 10th. We would invite community members to provide written feedback via email and an available online survey. I will note that email has been received over the course of the weekend and into today. An open house event is planned at Holy Rosary from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on October the 7th. That is a drop-in format, which would allow direct interaction and discussion about the relocation with staff. The information collected at the open house and through those other feedback opportunities would allow staff the opportunity to reflect on the input received and consider how that would factor into implementation details to be presented to the Board of Trustees on October the 27th. I'd be pleased to take any questions.
See Stanley.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to acknowledge, first of all, that you have almost an impossible job here, and I think we need to recognize that. All of our sites are over capacity, and no matter what we do, it's going to create issues. There's no easy solution here. That said, over the weekend, we have received significant feedback from quite a, what's clearly a very close-knit community, who is very concerned about a lot of these changes. We've heard feedback about the disruption to students, particularly in grade eight in their final year, transportation concerns and so forth. I think we're limited to two questions. So what I'm going to do here is I'm going to share two of the actual questions from parents, from two different parents that we received. So the first one's a little strong, but I think it gets to the point, okay? How will the board ensure that this is not just another short-term fix that leads to yet another move for these families in a few years?
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Trustee Stanley. Certainly, the pressures that we've been faced with have been rather unprecedented, and we are doing our best to respond to those in a comprehensive and thoughtful way. In terms of, you know, is this another short-term fix? We would have to continue to monitor enrollment in order to determine how best to meet the needs of this school community and others that are affected by the changes. We do know that there is, you know, another boundary review contemplated with some minor adjustments that are potentially an outcome to opening a school in Baden, which again could come back and involve this school community based on how its current boundary is structured. And the fact that there is the evolving growth forecasted in North Waterloo. The reality for any Board of Education, whether it's Waterloo Catholic or another board, is our boundaries, we try to provide stability and predictability, but they are not static. So I cannot sit here and, or stand here and guarantee that we do not have another engagement process in the future to look at adjustments. We know that we do have one likely as an outcome of opening a new school. But what we can commit to is further engagement with the community around what the implications are should future changes be required, and at this stage, listen to how best we can support families through this move.
Thank you. For the second question, this leads right into what you were just saying, which was that some of the, some of the students who have already been part of a boundary review, and there's been significant frustration voice that we're being moved again and again and again. So how will the board mitigate the stress and well-being challenges for both students and families of this proposed change?
Thank you again. And through you, Madam Chair. The board has a well-established history of supporting our student body with school moves through the transition planning that we have put into place and implement through our boundary review processes. We do have a menu of tools, and we have administrators who, together with the support of our executive team, would put into place a robust transition plan that would incorporate supports similar to what we would do through any boundary adjustment, which can include visits of the administrator to the students affected by the move, visits to the school, the receiving school, and other efforts to ensure that those students and families feel supported, engaged, and part of the move process. And those are things, again, that when we bring back a implementation report, can speak to more robustly.
Great.
No questions? Trustee Wyler, I saw your hand first.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation, and like Trustee Stanley, certainly understand the unprecedented pressures that you and the team are faced in helping us work through our enrollment growth. You know, I think we all received numerous emails over the weekend. You know, I think we all received numerous emails over the weekend, which were very heartfelt in talking about the impact mainly to students and more broadly, families. And so I was pleased to hear that we are, and this is the start of an engagement process, where people can email in, where they can participate in the survey. And then, of course, hearing from families directly on October 7th. I read each of the emails and it's clear that, you know, the community, this community is very engaged, which is amazing in the terms of their messaging when something is going to impact their, their children and their families. And so I know that through the engagement process, as I have seen through boundary reviews numerous times, the, the listening to parents around the impact, the implications, and how we can support their families is really important. One of the things I wasn't clear on, so I'll get to my question. In the recommendation, and I'm sorry if I missed it, when would this take place? Because I do think that timing can often sometimes participate in alleviating some pressures. And so I just wanted to get a sense of if, whether it was going to be sort of thinking for January or next year, et cetera.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Wyler. The report outlined that the change would take place for the 26, 27 school year. So while the engagement and the presentation of implementation details would transpire through the remainder of this month and into the, into October, the support of the student moves and associated staffing related processes, et cetera, would play out through the, the winter and the spring and the move would transpire to align with the start of the school year next September.
Through you, Madam Chair. So being that it possibly, or the recommendation from staff to be implemented in the 26, 27 year, I say that lightly because of course we still have a full consultative process to go through. Much like boundary reviews, would there be opportune, and I know it's not a boundary review, but is there options for, you know, grade eight students or siblings or some of those concerns that can alleviate the pressure for a lot of families?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly with regards to the legacy exception that is often offered to grade seven students, it is something that staff can take under consideration for, for their detail to be shared at the end of October. The thinking of staff in line with the, the numerous points of contact with French immersion community members over many years was prioritizing keeping siblings together. And whether that is by grade participating in FI or whether that is keeping non-FI siblings and FI siblings together, i.e. those JKs or SKs who may be joining their grade one FI older sib or, or older sibs who may also not be part of the program. Those are, those remain a priority and certainly we will reflect on that input and take that into consideration as we bring forward further implementation details as to how those siblings are all accounted for.
Trustee Cuff.
So my concern is actually about the, the families that they're basically within walking distance of Holy Rosary and they chose to put their child into French immersion because why not? You know, they're at Holy Rosary anyways. Let's take advantage of the French program. And now basically you're asking them to take their child 20 minutes away. Like how are we, are we giving them any assistance or to take them between the two schools? Because usually for French immersion, you are responsible for your child's transport, even if it's outside of your, outside of your regular area, right?
Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Craft, you are correct. Bus eligibility is determined based on a school's English boundary. So the English boundary of a school hosting FI, if you reside within that, you may be bus eligible based on distance. Otherwise, families are on their own to transport their student to and from school. Certainly, at this point in time, that policy remains the, the guidance. However, based on input from families, we can as staff consider whether there's any additional exceptions under the circumstances that could be considered as part of implementation. And we will certainly reflect on that as we approach October.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the LTAP, I think, and partly this report, I think one of the key things is what would be happening with the Beaver Creek Meadows potential school. And in the LTAP, it says, what are the future actions to reserve and acquire future school site in the Beaver Creek Meadows District Plan area? So I guess my first question is, has there been any movement on this?
Through you, Madam Chair. At this stage, the developer is certainly aware of our interest and it is in their hands to advance their plan through the municipal approval process.
Okay. And if we were to acquire the school and we were spoke, and we were put forward a capital approval, what would be the fastest we could expect to have that new school?
Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Sikora, that kind of flows into my next presentation around capital priorities. Certainly, as you're well aware, while the board may acquire an interest in a property, we must request the Ministry of Education to fund that construction. At this stage of the game, I can't provide any kind of absolute guarantees on the timing. But certainly recognizing the circumstances, it would quickly become a priority of the board to make requests for, for funding for capital construction.
Yes, actually just one follow. So the French immersion would remain at St. Nicholas even with the Beaver Creek Meadows area school?
Again, I think that's a, a future fulsome process that we need to be taken into consideration. But given the concerns that we have heard to date with regards to disruption and moves, staff would take that feedback into account as it worked through any future boundary review associated with another new school.
Are there any other questions from trustees? Trustee Phillips.
Through the chair. I definitely agree that this is a very tough situation and I appreciate all the work you've put into this. I wanted to ask if, or what methods you are taking to let everybody know about those dates and, and the methods of communication that are available. I think that's really important, you know, whether it be a news wire. I don't know if you do through Facebook, any type of means is possible. And also reminders, because a lot of people work, both, you know, both parties of the family work and, you know, sometimes we miss things. Also too, I think in order for me personally to be ready to make a decision on this too, I would really want to see parental feedback. And I would also like to know about what, what type of remedies are being offered to these families, what options? You know, whether you're sending that to us, you know, by email and also present it on, on the 27th. That's something I'd like to see, just to see if these options are reasonable for a parent. And I'm going to be collecting, I feel like it's early on for myself. I'm still collecting emails and feedback, but I'd like to see that as well.
Madam Chair, just to expand on the, the request for information with regards to the communication strategy. So following this evening's meeting, material or information will be distributed by school messenger to both school communities. Administrators have messages ready to be distributed. They do specifically highlight information shared with you on the screen right now in terms of how to engage in this process and the timelines associated with that. And as well, our communications department is prepared to provide social media messaging to accompany that as well. So that is all ready to go. I will note for clarification that the information being brought this evening is at the staff level for information and similarly, we would expect to be bringing forward the implementation deals, details for, for information.
Just to follow up, so you're saying that any type of remedies or solutions to offer support to parents cannot be discussed in a public meeting, but it could be possible to bring it up in, in a private meeting so that we are aware as trustees before making a decision?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the information that would be presented on October 27th will be staff's fulsome consideration of the engagement and the input received with associated details as to how the, how the implementation will play out. At this stage, based on the fact that this is a operational matter, there is nothing currently contemplated to be put together for board's deliberation.
I just want to encourage everyone who's attending here tonight and also watching at home to stay engaged. We are listening and as a representative in Waterloo, I can tell you, at least speaking only for myself, I have not made up my mind on this whatsoever. So this is not a done deal at, at all. Okay? Thanks.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to turn things over to Superintendent Maharaj for one moment, just to clarify that point. Thank you.
Thanks. So trustee is very correct. We are listening to feedback and we will take all information into consideration. Just a reminder for trustees that this is not a decision that trustees are required to make a decision on. So there's no motion, there's no approval. This is just for information so you know what's going on in the system.
Trustee Garen, you had a.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Do we have clarity on what percentage of the, the population in, in French immersion at Holy Rosary are local to the, the school community versus coming from other places around the region?
Through you, Madam Chair. The information that we have that supported the, the work that was done to assess the, the, the projections would indicate that it was close to a 50 50 balance between students who reside within the Holy Rosary English boundary, both the main boundary as well as there's a portion that's described as a bus boundary. And the other portion of students are coming from outside of that area.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just one additional comment just regarding the process. So we know that there is a concern with the capacity and the ability to sustain the program at Holy Rosary, which is why this has come forward as information, which is why we're beginning this process of engagement. And I just also like to clarify and confirm what trustee Stanley did say that we are listening to the engagement and feedback of our community. We know that this is a very emotionally difficult and challenging situation and that it is, can be disruptive because of the nature of it. And we are in a tough, difficult spot because we know that the program is not going to sustain itself in that building. However, we are open to the feedback around the implementation of that change. So we encourage people to please come on October 7th, also to submit their feedback, to complete the survey, to offer their thoughts around implementation of the program. We know like again, there is an issue. We can't sustain it at Holy Rosary. So what could we, what can be offered in terms of being able to ensure the best for our students involved?
Okay. I don't see any other questions from trustees who haven't had a chance to speak. So I think we'll close the discussion then. Thank you. We'll move now back up to 5.1 capital priorities submission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is the capital priority submission. So about a month ago, the Ministry of Education sent out a memo inviting applications to school boards who could submit for capital projects. In your agenda, you will find a number of recommendations made by Jennifer and her team. If we had our druthers and we had a bit more time, we probably would have extended the list, but the timelines were very finite. And as I understand it from Jennifer, each business case is roughly 23 pages long. So they've been very busy working on this. And so Jennifer, if you want to go over some of those details, I'm sure they'd appreciate.
Thank you. As, as Shash indicated, we heard from the Ministry of Education actually on September the 8th that they had opened a window for capital priority submissions for the 25, 26 school year. Submissions are due by October the 8th. We won't talk about how many business days that is. The ministry priorities are focused on accommodating accommodation pressure throughout the province, responding to French language rights, school consolidation and any facility condition related rationale. As per previous outlines for capital priorities, the ministry does have an expectation that projects submitted meet a minimum 95% overall utilization within the associated review area as of 24, 25. And that the solution, whether that's an addition or a new school, would have more than 100% capacity within five years after opening. Not just that project, but again, the associated schools within the review area. There is a continued focus by the province on repeat designs. That means either a school that the board has built before or a school that is within a ministry supplied catalog of school designs. This is to try and streamline and create efficiencies in timelines for design and construction. So as you're aware, the LTAP presented in May of 2025 identified immediate term priorities, including the resubmission of the four projects identified on the screen. New North Cambridge, Monsignor Doyle Edition, St. Bernadette Reconstruction and the St. David Edition. The LTAP also prioritized the submission of two new projects, being a new school in Dune South in Kitchener, as well as an addition at Monsignor Haller. On the screen is just a little bit of orientation to where those projects are located. The new schools are those identified by the maroon circles, numbers one, two and six. The asterix denotes those schools which a previous capital priority submission had been made. We are kind of classifying St. Bernadette as a new school in essence because it is a, it would be a demolition and a reconstruction of a new building. The additions there, Monsignor Doyle in Cambridge, Monsignor Haller in Kitchener and St. David in Waterloo are there in gold for you. Briefly, the New North Cambridge School, which you saw last year and which had been submitted a couple of times previously, was expanded last year to be a 527 pupil place elementary school with an 88 space childcare center. It's intended to meet the immediate needs of this subdivision, which it's contained within, as well as adjacent subdivisions, provide relief to St. Gregory, or sorry, St. Gregory, St. Gabriel, my apologies, as well as meet the, partially meet the future needs of a new secondary plan area being developed south of the Fairway Road extension into, into Cambridge. There is also, or was also a MZO for a smart center redevelopment for those lands at Hespler Road and the 401, where we continue to see different development application proposals to convert portions of those lands to residential over time. The St. Bernadette replacement project is intended to be constructed as a new 657 pupil place school. The current single story elementary school has had multiple additions over its lifespan and it's really not suited to further additions or alterations due to how it's oriented on the site. And this new project is intended to ensure that that community school is able to respond to the growth in largely infill and intensification. in largely infill and intensification projects occurring nearby, including the Schneider Site redevelopment, the Mill and Ottawa Street Ion Station redevelopment opportunities, as well as each one of those blue dots on the map, which is another residential infill project within the school's boundary area. At Monsignor Doyle, we had asked for funding last year and are again proposing the same project, a three-story, 16-classroom addition. This would allow us to respond to not only those colored areas shown on the screen as new subdivisions, either under development or under under approval, but also allow for consideration of rebalancing enrollment between both Monsignor Doyle and St. Benedict. Similarly, St. David's addition would allow some opportunity for considering rebalancing, as well as respond to the growth within its boundary, including the significant redevelopment proposals at the Kraus Carpet Site, the former Conestoga College in Waterloo Inns properties, as well as the NCR property, and all of the other blue dots shown within its boundary area on the map. Monsignor Haller's proposal is new this year, as noted. The proposal is to construct a 12-classroom addition, right-size existing kindergarten classrooms, and create a purpose-built special education classroom, construct a new gymnasium, and that would allow us to repurpose the existing gymnasium into a learning commons and allow for administrative space to be appropriately sized to the future school capacity. There is ongoing residential development immediately north of Ottawa Street that is part and parcel of this school's boundary. And this addition would allow us to respond to not only the pressure currently being experienced, but the future residents of those additional projects as well. And finally, the New Dune South Elementary School is again proposed as a 657 pupil place school with an 88 space childcare center. This would allow us to provide enrollment relief to St. Ceteri and St. Timothy, as well as St. Josephine Bakeda, and help us address the future enrollment growth, both in the existing area as well as the future Dundee Secondary Plan area, which is outlined in yellow immediately to the west of that flag. So the staff's rank order of those priorities is consistent with the presentation and contained in your report as a recommendation. I'd be pleased to take any questions on those.
Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee Sakura.
I guess I have a few questions, simple one, actually. The four previously submitted capital priorities, did we get any feedback or response from the ministry on those, or just a no?
Through you, Madam Chair. Excellent question, Trustee Sakura. We did have a debrief with ministry staff. Staff were continue to be quite encouraging about the the projects that were submitted. The process is such that staff's recommendations have to be sort of vetted up the chain. And so despite staff's support at our level with the engagement we have with our capital analyst, some things just don't survive. And so we were encouraged to resubmit. We were not, it was not suggested that we make any significant alterations to the projects other than provide a little bit more information as to why other capital priorities that we were funded for do not actually serve to provide the solution to these to the need of these projects.
You guessed my second question there. And I guess another question about St. Bernadette. If it is, if it is approved, I guess my question really is, how will the students be accommodated? Like, how long do we anticipate the reconstruction, demolition, rebuild to take? And where will students be accommodated? Because I know our code an issue with one of their schools right now.
Through you, Madam Chair. So you may be aware that we constructed a new school within a year when we just opened our Holy Trinity School. It and St. Patrick were both constructed in about a year or slightly longer. We would anticipate a similar timeline for the new build. We would need some time, obviously, to also demolish and prepare the site for the new construction. So all that to say, a year or so, really dependent on approval timelines largely from the ministry as well as our municipal partners to ensure timely processing of site plan, applications, and building permits. So those are the kind of timelines, and I'm kind of looking a little bit towards the back to my friend Chandler, who is managing our construction department right now, but I I think I got a sense that he was giving me an encouraging. My timelines sound good, Chandler. Okay, excellent. In terms of temporary accommodation, we would be looking at housing all students together in one location. So there's limited opportunities for how that could be pursued, and I think it's appropriate at this stage of the game to to consider those closer to knowing whether or not we've actually got a project and communicating that cohesively and comprehensively with the affected community.
Trustee Garen.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your. My question, I'm not sure if I'm asking you to put on your psychic hat or not, but we've been quite fortunate as a board to be having projects being approved for within a two-year period, and I think probably six within the past four or so years. Do you, is the communication that you've had with the ministry leading us to believe that maybe our our good fortune is going to continue or that we have had our share?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think if anything, at the moment, the correspondence we've been having at a staff level has been encouraging and recognizing the pressures that this board is facing with regards to its enrollment. There is an element of the ministry's evaluation that does look at capacity of the board to manage additional projects. I don't know how that's evaluated. However, we continue to have a strong record of performance, certainly as evidenced by our ability for the team to get Holy Trinity constructed within the year. So I think that holds well for us in terms of the evaluation.
Wyler.
Through you, Chair. Thanks again for the presentation. I'm glad to hear that we're going through another request for capital priorities. One of the things, I guess, that our growth has created is previous boundary reviews, and then if some of these get accepted, future boundary reviews. And I know these are difficult situations, but I I think it's important to highlight which schools, as we go through this sort of cycle of build, would be facing perhaps a second boundary review in sort of a small number of years and really making sure that, you know, we start that boundary review process early, you know, over communicate. Because I think that, you know, you get through one, you sort of process it, and I know that these are not easy decisions, but where we do see that there's crossover and there's going to be two in a short period of time, I think we need to be additionally responsible to those families that are impacted. And I just sort of saw a little bit of overlap here where maybe that could occur, where there could be multiple boundary reviews within a cycle of years.
Trustee Doherty Masters.
Yes, and again, thank you very much for the the background. That really helps. I just had a question about the the St. Bernadette replacement, as it would be very unique to have us move an entire population in order to build the school, as we have been able to build it right on the school property before. St. Bernadette being a very vulnerable population overall, high number of multilanguage learners and a high number of those living in a lower income bracket. Just wondering, because the ministry is obviously not going to provide additional support for that community in terms of the move and the anxieties and so on that are going to accomplish it. Do we have, if the project is approved, do we have the supports in place that will help that community? And I think you alluded to that in the the question that trustee Stanley asked about moving families to to the new school. You know, we would require extra supports for that community in order to help them to relieve some of that anxiety and with moving and so on. And I'm even considering how that might affect student achievement as well. I'm just wondering what supports would we would be able to put in place, or if you could at least expand on that a little bit.
Through you, Madam Chair. So certainly, as I'd outlined in the in the previous comments with regards to the the menu of options that we have available to support students through a traditional boundary review process, we can apply those learnings and opportunities to support a a community move. And we would envision being able to relocate the, we would have to relocate the entire school community together to another location. So at least we have continuity in those circumstances for classes moving together with their teacher and all the administrative supports. I do want to look to Superintendent Merkel, who supports this family of schools, to perhaps touch more specifically on the kinds of supports for our vulnerable students, our multilanguage learners, to be able to offer what that might look like in the in the case where St. Bernadette's population being more vulnerable is relocated to a temporary location while the school is under construction.
Thank you so much. So having the the good fortune of dealing with or working through mental health and well-being is my portfolio as well. We know that there is a great response from our community representatives as well in terms of support from mental health and well-being. We do have those processes in place within our school board, so of course, that would be directly considered on how we might best support that community. Further to that, because the community is so our population at that community has so many MLL learners, we largely lean into our translators to make sure that the message is clear and concise, and it gives that opportunity for our families as well to express their concerns. As well, we do have a lovely new administrator at that school who comes with a lens of care and compassion and is working very hard at this point to build strong relations within that community. And in advance, of course, if there was a move for the purpose of this rebuild, that would be front and mind with every decision that's made to ensure that our families have a secure and smooth transition. And again, those that communication is open and wide in that community now. So that would be ongoing, and we would put people in place as needed.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that, given the uniqueness of that population. Thank you.
Any other questions from trustees? Trustee Sakura.
Thank you for letting me ask them. A simpler question. I noticed the Monsignor Haller, it's adding classrooms and a gymnasium, and the Catholic secondary schools, the additions are only classrooms. Is there a reason we're only going with classrooms and no other types of learning spaces, gymnasiums, or expansions?
Through you, Madam Chair. Specifically in consideration for the secondary projects, why just regular classrooms? The the majority of, of course, credits are those that can be taught in standard classroom environments. So in order to kind of maximize the space that we have available, which is limited in both cases, to look at projects that provided more shop environments, et cetera, would severely limit our ability to actually respond to the enrollment associated growth as opposed to trying to provide additional standard classroom space that would help us respond to more course offerings in traditional classroom environments.
Superintendent Mendocca, you wanted to share some work.
Thank you. Just go back one question to add to Superintendent Merkel's response. Our community settlement workers are very well connected with our multilingual learners and their families, and we would lean into them for any type of transition. They would be of great support for those families as they transition over. Some of them already have pre-established relationships with community settlement workers, and we could certainly facilitate more through our newcomer reception center. So, yeah.
Not seeing any other questions from trustees, so thank you very much. We'll move on then to 5.2. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Okay. There is a recommendation at the end of this report that staff be directed to submit capital priority program requests for funding in the following order. It it lists them 1 through 6 there. New North Cambridge, St. Bernadette, Monsignor Doyle, St. David, Monsignor Haller, and New Dune South. Could I get a mover of that motion? Trustee Garen and Trustee Wyler. Do we have consensus? Okay, yes, seeing yes. Thank you very much. Moving now on to 5.2.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So coming up to the front is Chandler Kinsey. Chandler is our construction supervisor, and so he has been overseeing all of these great projects that you've seen, our two new highs, sorry, our two new elementary schools. He is working on the 7 to 12 school, Southeast Gallat School, the addition at St. Bridget, and a variety of other renewal projects. Chandler has been in his current role for about a year. He's standing in for Anna Taylor, who will be back, I hear shortly. But while she's away, Chandler's been doing a fantastic job. He's a very laid-back type of individual, and so with all these projects that you've seen going on, you know, you may wonder why he's looking so youthful. So just to tell you, he is 21 years old. That's what he told me to tell you, and he looked much different before the year started. So Chandler, if you're good to go, I'm sure you'd be happy to show off your good work.
Thanks for the introduction, Shash. Appreciate it. So yeah, like like Shash had shared, I'm filling in for Anna while she's away. I'm the acting supervisor here at Facilities, also covering for Adrian, who's also away currently. So I'm just going to run you through a quick update what we have to for the past year or so at Facilities. It's been quite busy, quite a busy year. We've opened up quite a few new schools and and are looking to constantly maintain the existing ones as well. So basically, we're at Facilities and specifically in Construction, we're more or less responsible for three sources of funding. SCI and Renewal are the sources that are deal with existing schools and the maintenance of those schools. And they also allow us to take requests from schools, make improvements where where we're able, kind of shy of anything that would be considered maintenance, general maintenance. And the other source that we deal with is capital funding, which, as gender shared consistently, we have been consistently busy year over year with those types of projects. And as well, over the summer, we were dealing with assessments with the ministry, visited 13 sites just to kind of understand the existing conditions and how to better plan for those in subsequent years. So jumping into SCI and Renewal, so for those of you who aren't familiar with what those types of things can be used for, Renewal is for more or less like finishes and stuff like that, non non-service or envelope-related types of components in the building. This year, we spent roughly $3 million in renewal funding. And the SCI portion, we spent about $6 million. S C I portion, we spent about six million, which, as I shared, deals with building envelope, building services, energy efficiency, and accessibility mainly. These projects were all completed roughly over this, like roughly through the summer, which runs from July first to August twenty fifth, which is when the schools are obviously empty, and we can take care of as much as possible during that time. We do do still have some ongoing things, such as long lead items, like doors is always a fun one, for example, or other specialty items which may may cause issues with getting it all within the two-month timeframe that I outlined earlier. Some high-level projects that we did complete, high schools are primarily, we do those, we focus on one of those a year. This year, we spent about three million dollars at Resurrection, upgrading washrooms, adding additional washrooms, providing updates to flooring finishes, lighting, skylight repairs, that sort of thing. St. Teresa in Kitchener, we also, you'll see a consistent thing here with washroom upgrades, bringing things up to par with in terms of accessibility is a main focus that we're we've been delving into for the past few years at least. And there we also had lighting, flooring, boiler replacements, and other miscellaneous repairs. St. Mark's is, as Jen shared, a site that's gonna be receiving an addition in the near future. So part of that to plan for that was to provide additional parking. If anyone's ever been to that site recently, you'd see that that was an issue in the past. So kind of to get ahead of that, we had extended that parking lot as part of that project, as well as replace the roof, lighting and other features that would not be affected by any of the condition works. As you can see on the right hand there, that's a photo of the newer parking lot extension. Only half of that existed more to the residential side there. And then to the left, just a picture of some flooring in the lecture hall at Resurrection. Couple more projects that were done over the summer, both at elementary schools, St. Daniel. We completed washroom upgrades, lighting fixtures. We've added some new molocs and an exterior ramp out the, one of the exterior exits to facilitate better garbage cleanup and just make the site look a little bit more tidy and clean. Sir Edgar Bauer, again, similar scope, universal washroom upgrades, asphalt replacement, glazing units, that sort of thing. Couple more photos there at St. Daniel. There is a new library circulation desk. At St. Teresa, we upgraded an existing space to add a new universal washroom to better improve accessibility. Here you can see a more full picture of the fifteen projects that involves renewal and S C I funding. You'll see lighting and roofing were a common denominator and as well just miscellaneous upgrades to washrooms. And another of interest points, St. Benedict, we did have to go in and add some fire provisions to, again, address a shortcoming in our accommodations as the portable capacity was was limited, becoming limited there. That more or less ties up the S C I renewal portion of of the presentation. So we'll move along to some of the capital projects that we've opened and are in design and tender of. So this year, we did have four capital projects that were opened over the spring and or summer. St. Boniface Phase Two, which was included a secondary parcel of land being acquired to provide parking and exterior play space. That was completed in the spring, just before summer schools went out. St. Bridget was another project at about three point two million. We added a sixth classroom addition off the back of the school and a couple gang washrooms and storage spaces as well. That added about hundred and thirty eight new people places and got rid of four of the six portables that were on site. St. Patrick's is another school that Jen spoke to earlier. The school was built in less than a year. It it will add five hundred and twenty seven new people places and an eighty people place childcare. And that project was worth roughly twenty seven million. Holy Trinity was another project that opened within the year timeframe and was also in cooperation with some of our partners at the city of Kitchener, who have a attached community center as well. That school was similarly a five hundred and twenty seven people places and includes, as you'll see in a subsequent slide, a four four-wide gymnasium, which is quite large. This is the photo of where the tie-in between the existing and the new portion of the building are at St. Bridget. As you can see, it's it's fairly seamless. Most of the finishes we were able to match because the school was so relatively recently constructed, which again goes to show some of the enrollment pressures, how quickly they're they're catching up to us. As I shared earlier, this is the large trim space, looking down from the second story in the elementary school towards the community center. And a photo of St. Patrick's School to the rear of the school, just the mason completing some veneers back there. So in terms of this year, there are two projects currently in constructed, construction and are expected to open September first, twenty twenty six. These include our new high school in East Kitchener, I should say seven to twelve, sorry. And then it also includes the new joint school in partnership with the Waterloo Public Board, both of which are still on schedule and expected to achieve those dates. So here we have a early rendering of the East Kitchener seven to twelve school. To the right-hand side is more or less where the the sevens to eights will be housed, and then to the left is where the high school portion will be. Here is a rendering of the Joint Use Elementary School, which is more or less cut in half, more or less where this bridge-like structure in the center is. Those are some of the shared spaces at the site. And the Catholic portion is on the right-hand side, and the public is on the left, similar similarly to the other site we looked at later, or sorry, earlier. There is also a I think an eighty people place childcare attached this as well, but they're working directly with the public board. So that ties more or less the in-process projects or in under construction, sorry, I should say. We do have six capital projects currently in design. These include five of the capital priorities which we achieved last year from the capital submission of that year. These include St. Mark, which is an hundred and eighty four people place addition with a double gym. St. Aloysius with a ten classroom, two hundred and thirty people place addition. St. Paul's, again, with a double gym and eleven eleven classroom addition. St. Boniface is a three-story, twelve classroom addition with two hundred and sixty two new people places being added. And St. Gregory with a five classroom addition and some jugglerian of other ancillary spaces like the library. And we're also busy working on Baden, which is being re-scoped to have enrollment increased to a total of three hundred and eighty nine people places with an eighty people place childcare. Moving on to portables. So short of opening those additions, juggling portables is always fun with planning, involved very heavily in in kind of guiding where we need to add and take away sort of thing. We did have thirty six portable moves this summer, a little a little lighter than we had originally projected, only marginally, but this included eleven new portables and twenty five relocations. And we are currently working on six additional fall drops as well. So each of these require the portables to undergo a building permit, electrical and data cabling connections, grading and asphalt to provide paths to and from the school for the the children and staff, as well as oversights by our consultant teams and E S A, city officials, et cetera. So looking ahead, are the completion of the two new schools I mentioned earlier, the Joint School and East Kitchener. We will ensure these projects and the ones currently in design and God forbid, we get any of the the future capital projects as well that are that are also needed. But yeah, keeping those on schedule will be top of mind. Updating projects and costs in the Ministry V F A database, which is more or less what our assessments and site visits with the ministry involve, and then planning for future capital to make sure our F C I's are at reasonable levels. And yeah, we're currently exploring the the next phase of our capital plan into the twenty five, twenty six school year. Some relatively recent news, there was some release of accessibility funding by the ministry as well, which you're working through, which is meant to deal with any deficiencies particular to accessibility, which could be power door operators, universal washrooms, elevators, that sort of thing. And then just to the right there, just a photo of first floor construction being completed and the second story going up with steel erection and concrete planks. So we, our team consists of currently five members, myself covering for Anna Taylor, as she should mention earlier, and then we have Safa, Michael, Kimberly, and Simon as part of our team. So that brings the presentation to a close. Does anyone have any questions on anything that was covered?
Questions from trustees? Trustee Wyler?
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation and congratulations on another successful summer construction update. I'm always amazed at the amount of work that's done, maximized over that summer period. So another long list of things that were needed. So congratulations. My question is related to the renditions, and it could just be when they were taken. I didn't see, and maybe it's too early, in the high school or especially the joint school, it really standing out in terms of that inviting Catholic space that people go into. Like when you go into any of our schools, of course, you know, there's the cross on the outside and they're inviting Catholic spaces. And I just didn't see that in the renditions. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak to that, what that could look like. I'm interested mostly in the joint school and how we differentiate that sort of entry space.
Yep. No, that's a good question. Yeah, we don't want it to appear nonnon-Catholic, even with our our non-Catholic partners. But yeah, there is, there is all the the typical things that you would see in terms of the Catholic symbolism. The roadway will have two separate signs, each directed more or less towards the public or Catholic side, talking electronic signage there. They will likely share a common address, but they'll have clear signage side by side on either. I'm just gonna go back to the running here to give you a better idea. Yeah, sorry. So two sets of two sets of poles with a common, a common bridge entrance, but there is a large Catholic cross just over our entrance with branded signage as well. When you walk in, there'll be cross features on the wall, feature walls, that sort of thing with the sort of artifacts you typically see at the schools as well. So you're you're definitely like directed where you want to go, just so people can actually find their their space. But there, yeah, there is still some effort put into the Catholic symbolism, for sure.
Superintendent Maharaj?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So trustee Wyler, the rendition of the seven to twelve school, which looks much like a white box with a cross on the corner, I was thinking exactly what you were thinking. Yeah. So what they did when they were creating this is this particular floor plan is a Hamilton Public school, which is actually in the downtown core or something like that. So what they did for our presentation is they took the school and they put a cross on top of it. But there is a lot of changes to the the face of the school because it's got a really good, I don't know, like everyone can see it, right? It's very visible in terms of where it is at a major intersection or roundabout. And so you'll see all of the things that you're used to. And so our friend Adrian enjoys, I don't want to say in-your-face type thing, but he likes all of the big, bold statements of Catholicity in all of our new builds. So I think you'll really enjoy what it looks like when it's done.
It's supposed to be the biggest cross today supposedly, but St. Patrick's has a pretty, pretty sizable one, but yeah.
Dakara?
Madam Chair, um, I think you've done a lot of work, the whole team, and I think actually a shout out is in order, if I understood the news article correctly, is that Waterloo Catholic is like in the bottom ten percent or something of schools with needing repair. So it's obvious what's going on. So shout out there. And I did have one question. One thing didn't seem quite clear to me. On the last page, it said, funding a total of eighty-three million has been approved for these additions, but the funding does not meet the benchmark required for addition.
Yeah, that's that's an interesting point. The background on that is that, yeah, it's about eighty-three million if they were to give us the funding that we needed based on cost consultant reports. But we did not receive that. We got approval to proceed with anywhere from forty to sixty percent of the actual amounts that would be required. So there was a bit of additional hoop jumping going on right now where we are needing to resubmit at eighty percent to gain that that shortfall that they a short change, I should say, that was received.
So just so that I understand, so when we get the capital priorities approval, we don't get it for the
Not necessarily. It was just, it it came out right around the time of the elections. So would it take that as as you like? But for whatever reason, they, we did not receive full funding for all of them. So it's not typical, typically, more typically, we would receive what we ask normally. But yeah, these ones are kind of unique for whatever reason.
See Phillips?
Through the chair. Thank you so much for your presentation. I found it very informative. I do have a question. I noticed that washroom upgrades was brought up quite often with many of the schools. Can you describe what type of upgrades that entails in as far as, you know, upgrading all the washrooms?
Yep, certainly. So a lot of our older schools, they don't have a lot of barrier-free requirements that are now code. For example, like universal washrooms, push buttons, that sort of thing. Heights of certain fixtures. As you can imagine, a lot of the the kids, particularly the boys' washrooms, are not in the greatest shape after about thirty or forty years. So going in and constantly maintaining those is a big priority. And a lot, we get, it's a request that we often get. So it's kind of both of those things all rolled up into one.
purity masters?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Just a quick comment about a previous capital project. The students and community are enjoying the tennis courts that have been redone at Resurrection. So that that was a thank you, especially to Adrian. Just have a question about the seven to twelve school. Have there been any changes either to the building itself or to any of the outside facilities like the sports fields in regard to cuts that need to be made because of funding or anything like that? Or is everything pretty much the way it was presented to us earlier?
Yeah, that that particular project did come in slightly below what we were approved for, which was good news because we only had one sports field. Typically, we would have two, but it's a little bit of a tighter site, as is common these days. So we did actually push through an option to have an artificial turf sports field because with utilization like constantly, there's not much of a chance that it'll survive. So it should hopefully be an improvement that the staff and students take advantage of. It's also got some really nice features that play with the grade that exists on the site, which should be nice for the sports field as well.
Guys, quickly follow up. So my real question is, is the track still there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
Any other questions from trustees? Keep seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving on now to five point three, summer learning and transition programs. Moving on now to 5.3 summer learning and transition programs.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. A brief update tonight in regard to our summer programs, summer learning programs, as well as some transition programs. I think it's a good news story and just sharing we're able to serve as well as the learning that took place. So I think everyone here is familiar with the Summer Boost program. And each year we try to have a location in each of the, across the tri cities to represent the board. So this year we had St. Luke's in Waterloo hosted Summer Boost, Our Lady of Grace in Kitchener and St. Peter's Cambridge. And in regard to the Summer Boost staffing, we've been very fortunate the last few years that we have been able to supplement the program with some special education funding. And as I think you've heard me say many times here, we prioritize the registration based on the learning profile for Summer Boost. So those students that have an IEP, they get moved to the top of the list and there's, and then their siblings as well. So because of that, we, we can provide some special education summer funding to that and we're able to increase, or I should say, have a better ratio. And so for example, we had approximately 26 students in each classroom and we had a team teaching model again. So 13 to one ratio, which allowed for more small group instruction and more learning to take place for the students. Each site was able again to have a special education teacher. Each site had two EAs assigned to each site to support the program. We also had a literacy resource teacher, numeracy resource teacher, and an itinerant assistive technology trainer support the program. And so all in all, we had 315 students across three locations this summer in Summer Boost. So the things that the program focused on was minimizing summer learning loss, identifying learning gaps and structuring programs to reduce gaps and increase achievement, provide activities to enrich student participation, and building capacity in students, the parent community and among staff as well. And one of the key focus of Summer Boost is literacy and numeracy. And the reality is we have 15 half days. It's a short time. So you want to, you don't want to have wide expectations. You want to focus and go deep. And so we met with our literacy consultants. We looked at our Acadians data, which is the screener data for, that for, that came out of the right to read implementation. And so we looked at that and we thought to ensure that it'd be the most effective place to start. We determined that reading fluency was going to be our focus. And we use the next steps in literacy instruction resource to do our pre and our post tests. And just high level sharing some of the literacy results that we had at St. Peter's, we had 44% of the students moved at least one entire reading level. And 13% improved within their reading level. At Our Lady of Grace, 35% moved at least one entire reading level, 29% improved within their reading level. And St. Luke's, 35% moved at one, at least one entire reading level. And again, 21% improved within their reading level. So some, in a short time, some great things there that were achieved and to celebrate. In the area of mathematics at Summer Boost, once again, we consulted with our math consultant. We also looked at our available EQAO and mock EQAO data. And it was apparent that there's some learning gaps in student understanding of data literacy. And so it was framed that students may know how to make a graph, but they struggle when they analyze and interpret the data. And so our focus became centered over, the overall expectation was to manage, analyze and use data to make convincing arguments and inform decisions in various contexts from real life. And so in doing that, we focused on critical thinking skills, given a great appropriate data display to help students become more data literate. And some of the positive overall outcomes, there was an increase in the number of students who felt more positive about learning and their ability as math learners and mathematics. We had an increase in the number of students who understood the visual representation of a given graph. There was also an increase in the number of students who could interpret the data from a graph. And the number of students increased who were able to make critical decision based on visual information given to them in a graph. So that is a high level snapshot of Summer Boost. One thing I did want to note, Summer Boost, it's been implemented for several years across Waterloo Catholic. It has been known as a great example of a summer learning program. And we've received a lot of recognition over the years and that's not to my credit, that's to the administrators. And I think back to Pat Runstedler, who was the key person who started the program. And just a lot of staff that come out in the summer and are passionate about learning and wanting to support our learners. And we have had a lot of great feedback from the ministry. And this summer we had parliamentary assistant of the Ministry of Education, Jess Dixon, came out to, to visit the program. So we were honored to host her and she did, she had a lot of positive and impressive feedback for us. So we're happy about that. I want to highlight just a few other programs that ran this summer, the St. Louis programs. There will be a more fulsome report, I believe in November. However, I wanted to highlight secondary credit opportunities. We had over 3,000 students registered. 84 sections of 21 different courses in an online asynchronous delivery model. We had 105 students who completed a two-credit co-op program. 14 students registered for the summer dual credit program. And we had 180 students who were in their first secondary school credit through the Reach Ahead Technology credits for grade nine that was offered at St. Benedict and St. Mary's High School. So a lot of positive results there in participation. And next up, we had the Summer Expedition Program. So we had 130, oh? I'm sorry, I'm not sure why it's moved on my screen, but not on that one. So we had the Summer Expedition Program. We had 130 students, six, grade six, seven and eight across two sites. We also had the International and Indigenous Language Program, 815 students from JK to grade eight, registered across 11 languages for the Summer Fund with Language Program. And we had our Head Start program. We had over 1,100 students registered at Head Start. And last but not least, transition to schools. We've hosted this for the last several summers and it was hosted at all, well, all high schools with the exception of Resurrection because Resurrection High School was under construction. So it was hosted at Holy Rosary. It, the program ran alongside of Head Start and each site had been assigned a special education teacher, two EAs and a child and youth care worker. And those sites, the special education teacher would set up meetings for any students who would benefit from a transition coming into the school prior to the start. It could have been a visit. It could have been a tour, could have met some teachers. And oftentimes the child's learning program, they might have been anxious. They may have been in the Community and Active Living Program. But it was something that just to assist in the transition to secondary. And then also if there were students in the Head Start program that may require some support, some of that support was allocated to the Head Start program. And finally, fall transitioning. And you may remember this, that we have the ability now to have some, the deadline for funding was moved from August 31st to September 30th. So we have a portion of funds right now that we are using to support students that maybe they showed up at a school and they're a new enrollment and they require some support or maybe just struggling self-regulation or just needing a little bit more support in transitioning into the school. So we have approximately 14 schools right now where we've added extra support for the month of September to help assist in transitioning the student in as well as building those skills with the student, as well as building the capacity of the staff, the school location as well to support that student. So that is a brief synopsis of summer learning and transition programs. As I said, I believe in November, there will be a more fulsome report on the St. Louis programs, but happy to take any questions at this time.
Are there any questions? Trustee Stanley.
Thank you, Superintendent Horan. I want to thank you and other staff, like as you mentioned, Pat Runstedler, who has worked to make this such a success in terms of literacy and math in particular. I guess I had two quick questions. We heard a bit about literacy and math. Has there been some consideration of even, you know, science, history, geography, other areas that maybe you might want to expand it into? And then the other question would be, I was curious if you could just explain in a little bit more detail how this secondary transition to school program differs from the Head Start program.
You bet. Thank you. And before I, through you, Madam Chair, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention Principal Sean Spitzik. So he was the principal of the program this year, did a fantastic job as well as Lisa Mackay, who helped provide support around the St. Louis programs as well. And two, I'm going to start with your second question in regards to the transition piece. So it's more of a specific, the transition to secondary is more of a specific targeting students who we think would benefit from support and actually reaching out to them and extending an invite. And so we will have in June, we will talk to our social workers and we'll say, do you know anybody on your caseload that might be struggling? Maybe with anxiety, they may benefit from it. We talked to the Special Education Department heads, the vice principals guidance. We send out an email and we have a bit of a profile and we share, you know, if a student is experiencing this or they might be in this program, please bring it to the attention of the spec ed teacher who's running Head Start. And then they will actually reach out, call the parent and set up a formal invitational. Whereas Head Start, people register at Head Start, they're part of the program every day for a half a day. And then we do get the learning profile of those students as well. And if we know in advance, which we do, if they have an IEP and might benefit from support, then the spec ed teacher may allocate support there. And we've had it before too, where this summer as well, there were students where we added more support to the schools because we realized we needed more. To your first question around other subject areas, we do, we do have STEM, we have science in Summer Boost. We try to integrate it where best we can. It's a challenge only being half the day, but I would have to say, and that was one of the things that the ministry has complimented us on is the, how we integrate other subject areas within the day. And we also include Laurel Creek so that we're going and we're, there's often a, they will either come to the site or the students get bused to Laurel Creek because we do have some funding for that. So where possible, we are trying to integrate other subject areas. Thank you for the question.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other questions from trustees? Trustee Wyler.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you Superintendent Horan for the report. I have a comment and then a question. So thank you very much again for the whole breadth of programs. My own daughter this year took, had the transition support that started in June with a meeting and then she had a tour of the school. She participated in Reach Ahead for the technology credit and it wasn't available at St. Mary's. So she went all the way to St. Benny's, which was fantastic. And then she participated in Head Start as well. By the time she had her first day at grade nine, she was like, yeah, I don't need you, mom. So in terms of the staging of the different supports for her, it really reduced her anxiety of going. She was able to be successful in the summer. So I can't say enough good about having participated in Summer Boost in the past and the programs this year that we participated in. So congratulations on another fantastic summer. My question leads into funding. So Summer Boost some time ago was funded by code. And then it sort of morphed into transition post COVID funding. And I'm a little confused on where funding sits today, but the reason I ask is we want to continue to advocate for this to get into permanent funding so that we can continue to grow and support our kids this way. And I understand there's still a portion of it that is not in permanent funding. And so I'd like your help in understanding as we look for our advocacy at the provincial level this year. You know, your help in what we should specifically ask for to see if it can get into that core funding model.
Great. Through you, Madam Chair, and thank you, trustee Wyler, for the question. And it's a great question. So you are correct that a few years up until about a year or two ago, the, the funding for Summer Boost was through code and it was moved into the core education funding. So we can take that, well, I don't want to say take it to the bank, but it's, we know it's there every year. We were waiting for approval sometimes up until late May. Right? Are we going to be running a summer program or not? And so we now know that that has moved into the core education funding. So that is a blessing. We're fortunate for that. The summer special education funding, which is a priority funding, it is funding that is released last year, they did it for two years, which is a positive sign because it is usually released every year and we don't know if we can rely on it so much. And that's a key, key funding to enhance our programs. And so I would say if there was any advocacy, and I know both the Board of Trustees and the CAC Committee have been nothing but supportive of this in the past and have advocated in the past. And I would have to say, I think the ministry has listened to a lot of it before because we've seen changes. So the summer special education funding for summer programs, I think that would be something I'd like to see go into core funding. So thank you for the question.
Questions from trustees? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Moving on now to 5.5 Director's Report.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to provide some highlights to my Director's Reports, which you'll find in your package on page 38. I did, just to highlight a few of my events over the last couple of months. I did spend the majority of August transitioning with our outgoing Director of Education just to ensure some continuity of operations and bringing me up to speed on crucial information that was necessary for my transition. Also, I was very pleased that we were able to hire our new Superintendent of Learning, Patrick Eby. So that was great that he was able to join our senior team. And I did spend some time with Mr. Eby on transitioning my portfolio and the items from my portfolio to him successfully. Also, we did hire Craig Mackaisik. He's our new Chief Information Officer to replace Krista Mers and we welcomed him to our senior team. Just in terms of our leadership, administrative leadership, we were very pleased that we were able to have a beautiful mass at St. Mary's to open up our school year with our administrators on August the 19th. It was just a nice way to set the tone, to introduce some of the concepts of the pastoral plan before its official launch. Talk about listening to understand and just is how we move forward in a positive way. So that was a very successful. We also, you know, continuing conversations, of course, with you around our multi-year strategic plan, which is on the forefront of my priority as well as the pastoral plan. Right, listed the meetings that I have attended and will continue to attend, the ones that are continuing, it's month by month and other events that have been happening. Just wanted to highlight that the St. Jerome Certificate Catholic Education Program, I was able to attend the graduation. This is the second year of that certificate program. So we had two candidates from our board go through the program and we also have two candidates moving forward in that program for this school year as well as candidates in our Information to Transformation Evening. Thank you for those who are able to attend the diocesan mass. Again, I continue with my, with my transition, my mentor with the Council of Directors of Education, meetings with the Southwest Directors as well. Just building some understanding capacity and just my success moving forward. So that is my report and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from trustees? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Moving now to 7.1 Student Trustee Report.
Through you, Madam Chair. So this month, the WCDSB Secondary Schools mainly focused on integrating secondary students back into the school routine alongside hearing the success of Head Start. So this was done through promoting inclusivity, belonging and providing leadership opportunities to our returning students and then the students who are coming into their schools, so our grade nines. to our returning students and then the students who are coming into their schools, so our grade nines. So this month, we had Photo Day. So Photo Days are held at the each, at the beginning of each of the school months and Student Council volunteers assisted with the organization and distribution of both student and staff name cards. So that was very fun for them.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say good evening, everyone. I'm very grateful to be in the presence of all of you. So Camp Kintail was an overnight retreat that Student Councils from Resurrection and St. Benedict attended, as well as St. Mary's is soon to attend. I must say that my third time there, it doesn't get old and it's truly an amazing experience. And it really sets the tone, as Director Verona was saying, it sets the tone for the year. It's a great time for Student Councils to get to know each other, for everyone to, you know, get used to the sectors that they're working in and, you know, look forward to an amazing year ahead of them. And I'm sure that Student, the Resurrection Student Council took a lot from it, Mary's will, as St. Benedict's did. At St. Benedict's, two great pieces of celebration is the introduction of Athlete of the Week, Staff of the Month and On the Horizon Artist of the Month. Now, this was really well-received last year because we want to represent, you know, students in our community as well as staff members as well to recognize their hard work. This is something that's also being worked on in other Student Councils as I'm pushing in the idea as we should better celebrate WCDSB staff and students. Finally, a more unique event happening at St. Benedict's and something that I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you as I know that trustees are looking to get more involved in school communities, is the Senior Football Pep Rally, happening against St. Mary's this Wednesday at 3 o'clock. Rain or shine, we hope to plan for the rain. It's going to be super fun. And if you're a trustee looking to attend to get engaged with some school activities, I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you all so much.
Continuing on to that, a lot of the schools have tried to initiate a grade nine welcome week. So that consists of different activities throughout the week planned specifically for grade nines. Different schools have kind of done different activities at lunches to integrate the grade nines into their high school experience. Some examples are like banner painting or different activities and challenges like our locker combos on our lockers. So those are always very difficult for grade nines to understand. So we like to kind of do different challenges to get them more familiar with that. Each school is holding or has held a grade nine-only dance, which is really fun for them. Some schools, like Monsignor Doyle has done a glow-in-the-dark theme. Others, like Resurrection, has done a Hawaiian luau. And it's essentially to just try and bring the grade nine community closer together and like Head Start, just foster new friendships. Additionally, each school held a Terry Fox run in support of the fight for cancer. So students were suggested to bring in a tuni for Terry. And then at their designated lunch breaks or during certain periods, they were welcome to come walk the track. There was music playing, tattoos, temporary tattoos, face paint and a bunch of other activities that students got to participate in. And it was really well-received and students were able to raise a large amount of money this year, which was great. And then finally, in September, we will be having Orange Shirt Day. So students will have the option an orange shirt with their uniform bottoms. So that's always fun for them to kind of get to be out of uniform for a special day. Orange ribbons will also be handed out to students who possibly don't have an orange shirt to ensure that everybody is kind of welcome to promote the day. And then certain schools have decided to dedicate their social medias to promote educational video to staff and students in hopes to reinforce the impact that the day has had on all people. So overall, September is a really busy month, kind of just integrating students back into things. But we've had a really great start and I know on behalf of Jace and I, we've had a really good time so far. So we're excited to see what's to come.
Any questions from trustees? Trustee Garen?
Thanks to the two of you for your first report. That was great. My question, I guess, is about Camp Kintail. Like, it sounds fantastic and there's three schools participating. Is this something that's going to be expanded to the remaining two? Or is there a specific reason that they're not?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think it's really school-specific. I did reach out because Doyle and Davids are schools that don't attend. I think that's specifically more on the administration and advisors. And I did recommend it to them because there's been positive experiences, you know, reflected throughout, you know, the other Student Councils. So hopefully it can be expanded upon to those other councils as there's lots of communication work and team-building activities that those Student Councils could definitely work towards as well.
And through you, Madam Chair. We also must consider the size of the councils. Monsignor Doyle and St. Davids do have significantly smaller councils compared to the other three schools. So it does cost more for them to attend Camp Kintail. Hopefully in the future, that will change. But I also know that Resurrection, being a larger council, we had struggled with participants wanting to sign up with the fear of missing out on certain classes in school, especially since most of the councils are consisted of the senior grades. But hopefully, yeah, there will be more integration of the other schools in the future.
Trustee Doherty Masters?
Yes, I would like to echo thank you for the report. I like the integrated approach that you have taken for this one as opposed to school by school. I like to see how there's commonalities between our schools. I just had a question about the club fairs and I can picture what that would look like at each school. And I think Rebecca, we talked about, how do you reach students who might not come to a fair like that? Think that there's nothing there for me? And how would you reach out to those students? You might not have an answer for that right now, but maybe something that you could take back to your school senate and say, you know, how are we reaching students that might not come to a fair? Or maybe there's something that they would want to be involved in, but it's not offered at the school? You know, kind of how would you, how would you touch those folks?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you for that. And it is something that we are continuing to try and integrate into our schools. How can we reach those voices who maybe aren't heard? Or those students who aren't able to or don't feel that they are willing to participate in something like that? Something that a lot of the schools, specifically Resurrection and Monsignor Doyle and St. Mary's have done is create a newsflash. So in the forums or the atrims of each of the schools, there is a television that projects kind of different activities and when social clubs are meeting and what is required to be a part of those clubs. So students who aren't fully comfortable in being integrated in certain events like the club fair where there is a lot of commotion and a lot of people are able to kind of view those things on their own time. But I would be interested in looking into what students think would be a more effective way for them to get that information and become integrated into the school community because it is truly a wonderful experience and great opportunity for everyone. Yeah.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for the report. You've obviously been pretty busy, the schools and the leadership during September. And so echoing other comments. To Trustee Garen's point, certainly St. Davids has had it in the past. So it would be interesting to know, I think, how we could support those schools going in the future if there, there is a concern or an issue. The other thing I was thinking, certainly, and I think Jace, you spoke about it, just encourage you to invite us when you see events coming up at the school. Last year, for example, I think there was the really cool Conclave while Conclave was going on. And so when there are things like that, so fun events, if you're doing things to celebrate our faith, we'd love to hear about those. So just encourage you to reach out and let us know when things are happening.
Are there any other questions from trustees? Thank you very much. Great job on your first report. Okay, moving on to item 8.1 OCSDA Communications. The link was provided in your package for your information. Moving to 8.2 Chair of the Board Report. I listed a few activities that I've done since the end of June and into the first week of September, notably the, the two school openings where I delivered opening remarks on behalf of the Board of Trustees. And that is all I had. That's very, in your package on page 45. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Moving on then to, oh, Trustee Stanley.
Just, Madam Chair, I might suggest that we take, as we had discussed, a 10-minute intermission at this point. It's up to you, but I think people might need to use the washroom. I don't know. It's your, it's your call.
We do have quite a few items to still get through on the agenda. But if it's the will of the group, we could do a motion for a quick recess, five minutes. Okay. And seconded by Trustee Stanley. Consensus?
I'd like a vote, please.
You'd like a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, okay. We'll set the timer for five minutes. It's 8:26. I'm, I'm going to call this meeting back to order here in the interest of time, as we do have a number of items to get through. Could I, could, yeah, could I get a motion to move back into our meeting? Trustee Sikora and Trustee Stanley? We have consensus to move back into our meeting. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving then to 10.1 Board Policy Review. This was for Trustee Wyler.
Through you, Madam Chair. I would submit that we are in compliance with this policy, but I would send it to governance. It was last updated in '23, so it's not a timing issue. It's just so that we can, some of the areas in here that, there are quite a few areas that could be up for interpretation. And so I think it's just better to be really, have a robust discussion and be a lot crisper. So I would move that we're in compliance.
Okay, can I get a second or that we are in compliance? Okay, Trustee Doherty Masters, do we have consensus? Okay. Seeing consensus. Thank you very much. Moving to 10.1.2 Board Policy Three, CEO Compensation and Benefits. And that was for Trustee Sikora.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have reviewed the policy and I would say we are in compliance. And I do not see a need to send this to governance.
So you move that we are?
I move, yes.
Do we have a second or that we are in compliance, Trustee Wyler? Do we have consensus? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to 10.2 Code of Conduct. And I'll let Trustee Wyler begin.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Chair. Just a bit of preamble for the full group. This was something that through last year's Governance Committee and this year's Governance Committee, with the changes to the legislation under Education Act 218.3, the Better Schools and Outcomes Act, we were expected to update our code of conduct to align with the new legislation. And so as part of bringing it to the Board this evening from governance, we spoke about it having, it's had a number of legal reviews and we are in full compliance with the ministry requirements for their changes to the code of conduct. And so we bring it here for approval this evening.
Okay, so then would we like to make a motion at this time? Or would you like to have a discussion?
I think in order to get I think in order to get it on the table, I will certainly move to approve the code of conduct as presented in the board agenda.
Okay, do we have a second or that motion? Trustee Karen. Okay. So we have the motion on the floor. I anticipate we would like to discuss this matter. I will just kind of put out our normal rules. It's two opportunities to speak, and we may have to time those opportunities depending on how the conversation goes because we can't, we can't have an endless conversation on this. So I will open the floor to whoever wants to begin the conversation. Trustee Stanley.
So thank you, first of all, Vice Chair, for the work you have put into doing this. I don't dispute that this is fully in alignment with the ministry's legislation. However, we are making changes to our long-term, a code of conduct that we've had for many, many years, and we're making some important changes to that. And my question is why these changes and why now? The ministry specifies that the only requirement is that another trustee or the director are the ones who can bring forward a complaint about another trustee. But what we're taking out with this change is any mechanism for our constituents or the public to also file a complaint against the trustee. Now, there's been one or two of those that have actually come out against me, so I've gone through this process, and it's not fun, but perhaps it's necessary because if we're not directly accountable to our constituents, then who are we accountable to? And what voice do they still have if we take that away from them? So the main question I want to begin with is why are we removing, exactly why are we removing the capacity for the public to have any ability to voice concerns with the conduct of trustees? Why now? Why this?
Thank you for your feedback. I think that based on the OESC training that we had to take by August 31, and under the changes to the Education Act under Bill 98, as you've alluded to, only a trustee who has reasonable grounds to believe that another trustee has breached the code of conduct may bring an alleged breach forward to the board. And part of that is the code of conduct is for trustees, by trustees, as part of our accountability as a self-governing board. I would entertain that with the other vehicles and avenues that our stakeholders can use in order to provide feedback, if a stakeholder does have a concern that they would like to bring forward about another trustee, it's very clear they can bring it to the chair. The chair then brings it forward, and so that's the first way that a ratepayer could bring a complaint forward. The second way that somebody can bring a complaint forward is through the Ontario Ombudsman, who also is able, enabled and empowered as an independent officer of the legislator to oversee public school boards. And so a ratepayer can also file a request and complaint through the ombudsman. And so I think with this update, I don't think it is eliminating in any way stakeholders' ability to provide complaints. I think that it goes through the chair for the chair to bring it forward or through the ombudsman, and I think those channels have been very well used in the past and will continue to do today. And so if something were to be, a complaint provided through another vehicle, like we have the fraud and accountability line for the organization, that would then subsequently be directed to the chair as it is today.
Trustee Cuff.
You mentioned that ratepayers know to send their complaint to the chair. Where exactly is that written? In what policy or what document?
So on the fraud and accountability line page on the website, as one example, it says that trustee complaints are to be sent directly to the chair. And in this particular code of conduct, it says that trustees can bring complaints forward. And so it is available for the public on the website that if, for example, they went to the fraud and accountability line, it would say this is not the right vehicle for you. This is for organizational complaints. If you have a complaint against a trustee, you should take it through the chair.
So I understand the code of conduct is supposed to be for us and what have you, but if somebody from the outside is actually looking at this and is not thinking, okay, I'm going to go through the fraud and accountability line, then how are they supposed to know that they can simply send a message to the chair to say, you know, that this and this trustee has done this to me? Like, that's my biggest issue, I guess, with this code of conduct, that there's no written statement, simply put, saying this code of conduct is meant for trustees. If you have a complaint against a trustee, if you, a member of the public, have a complaint against a trustee, then please email the chair.
Would we need that to be in the actual policy, though, or would that be, you know, like a preamble on the website where the code of conduct is housed, for example?
So I would be good with it being a preamble, like where these things are housed. Simply put, because I want it to be nice and visible, because when somebody is trying to look up, oh, how do I make a complaint? They need to be able to see it like straightforward, you know? You have a complaint, here's where you go complain.
Trustee Phillips.
Through the chair. As for me, I feel that the language should also include that, you know, if you don't feel comfortable going through these venues, you know, that we encourage them, of course, but for anything that they don't feel comfortable with, which I have come across numerous times, you know, as an example, and I'm not going to give names or anything, violence in the classroom where teachers feel unsafe, you know, and they're worried about losing their job. Okay, they don't want to go to any of those steps that you've mentioned because it could call them out. So they might go through the venue of, you know, making an anonymous complaint so that they feel safe and secure, you know? And it's also, it's more transparent and it holds us accountable as well. I mean, we shouldn't be doing anything anyways that we should be worried about, you know? We need to be transparent to the public. I don't see a reason why that should be left out. I think it's really important. But again, I definitely support encouraging going through that venue. I just don't want to leave that window out for the public because we are held accountable to them.
Trustee Sukora.
Just in response to Trustee Phillips' comment, violence in the classroom is not a code of conduct complaint against trustees, and that's what this policy is for.
I understand that, and thank you for bringing that up, but I just thought of an example off the top of my head. There are many other things, you know, there could be, let's say they went to, let's say they followed the venues or, you know, certain venues or something happened or had a bad experience with a trustee. Let's say it led to that, and they just want to make an anonymous complaint, which could happen. It may not even happen. I think the percentage is so low, but to not include that, I just, I feel like it's just wrong, especially at a time like this when the Minister of Education is reviewing all the boards. I think we need to encourage this transparency, and we don't have anything to hide, so why not?
Just on that point, the minute, these guidelines have been put forward by the ministry for implementation by school boards, and it was stated in our OESC training that anonymous complaints are not allowed as part of this process.
Yep. Yeah. I wanted to, I guess, make it very clear that the public, absolutely, our ratepayers, our stakeholders, our parents have the right to submit any complaint about the board through the fraud and accountability line. That is the organizational tool to submit complaints. It is a different vehicle than the trustee's own code of conduct, and I want to be, just separate them in the sense that that fraud and accountability line absolutely gives the right for anybody to email either anonymously or giving their name when it's through that line. That is just not the vehicle for our code of conduct. So just to be, I don't want people to think that has been taken away. They are very separate things.
Through you, Madam Chair. I was just going to add one additional point just around the fact that if there is an anonymous complaint, regardless of who it's made to, if it is criminal in nature or if it places a child or someone in harm's way, it's going to be investigated specifically through the fraud and accountability line, then that would go through our audit staff in order to investigate that. So by no means if somebody is in harm's way and they need to bring something forward, that would, that would be ignored. I think for the purposes, I think for the provisions of your code of conduct, the ideal, ideally it is that if members of the community have a complaint about somebody on the Board of Trustees, that that is reported to the chair, and the chair would bring that forward, and that is when your code of conduct would take effect. So it wouldn't eliminate any, like, any, you know, anonymous complaint coming forward from the outside to the board, but it would be, in terms of your own code of conduct, the ideal, ideally it is that we are aware of who is bringing the complaint forward. They bring the complaint forward to the chair, and the chair then, at that point, begins the process of the code of conduct. Unless the complaint, of course, is towards the chair, then that would, complaint would go to the vice chair. So just wanted to clarify that, you know, I don't want anyone to feel that if something really criminal came forward, that that would be ignored because if there's no vehicle for that.
Trustee Phillips.
Just a clarifying question. Now, you said very serious matters would be investigated, which, of course, you know, this is, that's very important, but my concern is, is the, excuse me, are we only investigating what is deemed very important, or are all things investigated? You know, because whether thing, you know, we are, all of us individually are responsible for a positive public image of the board, right? So I think that everything should be investigated, and if it's factual, then it would come forward. Now, again, this is a very small percentage we're talking here, but I think in order for me to feel comfortable moving forward, just having that language in there, even though, you know, for us, of course, we follow those methods and we encourage those methods, but I think having that language saying, you know, if you don't feel comfortable and/or if you've gone through any of these steps or, you know, there is this option, you know, if you want to bring a report forward. If there is that language in there, I'd be glad to vote that through.
Just to, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, just to clarify that point. So again, I think what we want to be clear is that this is your code of conduct for the Board of Trustees, and as you, as you know, so this, again, if there was a complaint coming forward, that it would go to the chair. That is the process that's involved. I will, in terms of the fraud and accountability line, when things are, I'm going to turn things over to Superintendent Maharaj. You can speak a little bit about some of the call, like examples of that that have come forward, that would delineate them.
Thank you, Madam Director. So just a question for Honorable Trustee Phillips. So the question, is it in relation to the fraud and accountability hotline and the functionality of that, or is it in relation to just trustee conduct matters amongst themselves?
Well, I feel that those two kind of have a connection together because if, let's say, a complaint comes forward about me, that I am breaking rules or anything at all, because we're front-facing, we all represent each other at the board, if I'm doing anything like that, it would, if somebody, somebody to the fraud accountability line, let's say, was investigated and it was found factual, then it would marry in to our code of conduct. So they kind of are related in a way because we are all responsible to follow all the policies and rules at this board, and then, and also to protect the image of the board, as, you know, it's so often brought up. We need to work together.
Okay, so perhaps I'll just provide a couple of statements. So as Director Verano said, the, anything that comes in through the fraud and accountability hotline, whether it's anonymous or not, we'll look at it, especially if there is some serious allegation. Our ability to follow up on those is limited by what is provided, which often isn't enough. It's a start, but it often isn't enough. So we'll do what we can with what we have. If there's some allegation that a trustee is involved, we're going to stay hands off, and we're going to pass it over to the chair and vice chair because there is that existing policy in place. So that would be our sort of response to that. I'm not sure if there's any other information that I can provide in that area.
Trustee Sukora.
Just one comment about very serious matters. If it is a violation of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, trustees cannot deal with it. It is a separate, we cannot bring that forward. It has to be a member of the public.
Oh, just to clarify your comment. So you're saying that that wouldn't come to the chair, that would just automatically go to the province, correct, for specifically code of conduct?
That is the mechanism that is to be, to be used. And I don't know if, what we would do if it did come to the chair. They would probably just have to inform the individual that that must be brought to, I forget the term, in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
Trustee Cuff, just a question. If, could you support the motion if we do agree to that preamble that we discussed earlier? Trustee Wyler?
I think there's two places that it could go. I think it could be tightened up on the fraud and accountability page, where Director Verano had called out that trustee matters were to be sent to the chair, as is written there, but I think it can be tightened up. But the other place is in our governance section of the website where we talk about the different policies. When it gets to that one, we could have a preamble there before you click on it, as an example, but I think there's two places where people would sort of go into to find out how to communicate a complaint.
Are you open to modifying the motion on the floor to support that?
Yeah.
Okay, would you as well?
I'd be very much in support of that. My only suggestion would be to add it on to the page with the photos of the trustees, just for maybe the, a more obvious place for the public to find. Just for maybe the, a more obvious place for the public to find it, just some, a little line. If you have a concern, here's the, this is the venue.
Okay, so do we need to reword the motion then? Or?
We need an amendment.
We need an amendment to the motion. Yeah, we need an amendment to the motion. Trustee Cuff.
Sorry, you also need to table the motion because it's almost nine o'clock and so there might be an extension.
Table the motion so that we can do a length of time extension and then come back. Okay. Okay, a motion to table this, uh, motion then. Just do Weiler and Trustee Sikora. Okay, consensus. And now a motion to extend our meeting past nine o'clock. Just do Weiler, Trustee Sikora. Okay, consensus. Okay. Now motion to untable motion? No. Can you put forward an amendment to the motion then? Yep. Yep, yep. Right. How the public would submit complaints against a trustee? Yeah, yeah, true.
And bring forward allegations against a trustee to the Chair.
It's perfect, Linda. Okay. Do you want to repeat that now so that we're? I like, I like allegations because.
Complaint is something that is actually substantive. We're not entirely convinced, um, when somebody sends something to the Chair that it actually has substance. It is for the Chair to actually investigate to and turn it into a complaint because since technically the complainant in that situation will become the Chair.
Trustee Sikora.
The, is it the duty, uh, just to clarify, is it the actual duty of the Chair to be investigating at that point in time? If something is brought forward? Uh, yes, it does say investigate, yes.
Trustee Stanley?
Have we had a vote to put the motion back on the floor yet? I don't think that vote happened. Okay. Okay, I'll defer to you.
To amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or Vice Chair.
I would keep it as complaint because our policy calls it complaints.
That okay, Trustee Cuff? Okay, then we leave it as complaint. Let's read it one more time so we're, okay.
To amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or Vice Chair.
Yeah, and then, do we need to say the original motion that we're? Okay. But is it, but does the amendment say that we're, that we're approving the code of conduct though?
So, um, I actually agree with Chair Kraft when she's saying maybe read the initial motion with the amendments. So that everybody understands what they're actually agreeing to.
Just so that we have the whole picture there.
And to include. So should I say that the Board of Trustees approve to amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just, here's the original, but I'll just split it up.
To amend the motion.
To amend the motion.
To.
And to approve the changes to board policy 2007.
Correct.
Sure. That the Board of Trustees approve to amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or the Vice Chair and to approve the changes to policy 2007 Board Members Code of Conduct.
So I'm going to call for.
That the Board of Trustees approve the changes to policy 2007 Board Members Code of Conduct as presented and to amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or the Vice Chair.
I would like to ask for this vote to be deferred and I'll tell you why. Even with these amendments, which I support, this change to our policy is changing something that I think has been in effect for 10, 20 years. We're, we're moving, we're stripping a particular mechanism out. And despite the existence of other mechanisms, it doesn't change the fact that we're making an important change to our code of conduct in a way that previous boards never did. And what I think the effect of this change will do is it will divest power away from the public and away from individual trustees and centralize it in the hands of the Chair and the Vice Chair and also the provincial omnibusman or other provincial official. Now, we're just about to hear in 12.1, we have a letter that we're going to be proposing to write to the ministry asking, uh, us to maintain our independence and power as trustees. But then we're passing a code change to our code of conduct that basically takes away our own power to look after ourselves when the complaints are made by the public and possibly passes it off to the ministry. So it seems that we're working against ourselves here with this change. And again, I don't necessarily like this centralization of power solely in the hands of the Chair. Because let's, let's be clear, the Chair will then have the power to basically decide on the merits of the public's complaints, potentially. And that's problematic in my opinion. So. Like to call a vote to defer this motion so that we can discuss some of these problems some more.
So there's already a motion on the floor? And, sorry.
It's only been moved, it hasn't been seconded.
Trustee Phillips.
Um, I'm not sure if we have to move to table the motion in order to defer, but I, I would concur to that. And I feel that, I don't feel comfortable voting on this today. I feel like I need some time to process this and, and possibly ask some more questions, um, as I digest everything I've collected today from all of you. Uh, it's been very helpful. Thank you for your input. I, I just need time to digest it. I feel that if I'm forced to make a decision today, the answer will be no. And I'd rather move together as a group. So deferring it would be very considerate, um, of all of us, um, who may not, or for any of us who may not feel comfortable voting on this today. Yeah, I just want to put that forward.
Okay, as we didn't have a seconder of the original amended motion, then I would allow the defer motion to be on.
I think the mover would have to withdraw their motion. Because otherwise I'll second the motion. And then we could move forward with a deferral if that's.
Okay, I didn't know. I'm trying to figure out. I didn't know that was an option. So then I think with a motion on the floor, we will accept the second, seconder, unless there's any objection by the original mover of motion. Okay. So then we have the amended motion in front of us with a mover and a seconder. Trustee Sikora.
Yes, I do, I do second the motion that was put forward.
Okay. Okay, then, Trustee Weiler?
Um, just to open it up for discussion before we call the move forward. In our current code of conduct, um, it says, a trustee who has reasonable grounds to believe that another trustee has breached this code may bring the alleged breach to the attention of the board. This is done through the Chair. A rate pair may also petition the Board of Trustees, but it must be brought to the Chair. And so we're not changing that piece of the code of conduct. It was always to be brought to the Chair. And what's different is instead of the Chair investigating in this new process, the Chair automatically puts it forward through the informal and then through to an investigator. There is no investigation done in the new one, whereas there was in the old one. So this actually takes it out of the hands of the Chair to investigate because it goes through the process to the investigator. So I just want to be clear that, um, I don't think that that part is different. And so that's why I was willing to have my motion be seconded.
Thank you for that clarification. Trustee Phillips.
Uh, that's also assuming it's a trustee to another trustee. Um, my concern is mostly the public. And, um, I just think that the, the, the language, it basically is saying that a name has to be attached to it. And that's, that's, that's the language what I'm understanding. And that's why I wanted this to get, uh, deferred so I can spend a little bit more time on this. Because some people may not want a name attached. You know what I mean? Uh, and, and people should have that amenity if they don't feel comfortable.
Trustee Cuff.
So actually to answer both questions, um, from Trustee Stanley and Trustee Phillips. Trustee Stanley, the reason why we have to substantially change our code of conduct is because currently our code of conduct, uh, basically has been kind of attached to the legislation. Like there is legislation that says that we have to involve the Integrity Commissioner and what have you after 20 business days. So we've just basically taken our code of conduct, put it at the top and then are using the legislation. Whereas this code of conduct actually takes the legislation and puts it into our code of conduct. That's the bigger difference. But it's always been through the Chair and Vice Chair. Or through the Director of Education if you feel that the Chair or Vice Chair are compromised. That's who it's supposed to go through. Trustee Phillips, um, the, the part that you're commenting on is actually in the legislation. And, and that's actually where I was struggling with as well, that, um, where can somebody make a complaint? But since, um, Chair Kraft has acknowledged that if something is sent to her, that she's going to ensure that the complaint actually has merit and then attach her own name to it. Because since a trust, since technically only a trustee can put through the complaint, then it has to come from the Chair. But a member of the public still has to have the ability to make the complaint. to make the complaint, which means it will go to the Chair, and Chair Kraft will put her name onto it, saying, "Yes, I believe this complaint needs to come through the formal process, because it has valid, it is valid." So that's why those two pieces, I've been more focused on how a member of the public can actually still make the complaint. And I do agree, though, that they should be allowed to make an anonymous complaint, because even if they send it through a throwaway account to Chair Kraft, I would expect Chair Kraft to actually still investigate it. Or not investigate, but to actually review it, whether or not it has merit. Because I don't expect it to go through the formal way every time, but I do expect that any member of the public who sends it, that Chair Kraft will actually look and see if there is validity to it. And see if, what have you. So that's why I'm okay with the changes to the website and most of these other changes, because we have no choice in the matter. Like, this is what's happening in the legislation.
trustee Sukhara?
Yes, I do agree with trustee Cuff. This is the legislation, it is effective September 1st. We need to get aligned with the legislation. There are many things that get passed in the legislature that I'm not happy with. Not necessarily the Education Act, the Highway Traffic Act, various other things. But we have to live with those. And this is a situation where we have to live with what is in there. They've affected other things on the, about the code of conduct, which we have to live with. We have to live with the legislation.
We're getting really lengthy, guys, so I hope we're not going to raise the same points we've already raised. Final, final comment to each of you?
I think a critical point of the legislation, oh, and yes, I have read it, is that we must have certain elements to comply with the legislation, but there's a specific line there that then says that boards can have additional elements in their code of conduct as long as it does not undermine or contradict the required elements. So what I would challenge us is, why don't we go above and beyond the legislation to really make sure that the public has a way to file complaints, air their grievances in a way that's transparent, and not just to be passed off to some provincial official, or not just to be, you know, swept under the rug by the Chair, et cetera, et cetera.
I really appreciate everybody's input, and I've been kind of still processing things. And I came up with an idea that would make me feel comfortable, and I think everyone here would feel comfortable with. Are we able to add language in there in regard to involving the Director on the complaint, just to make sure that there is no perceived bias or anything like that? Again, not saying that there is, but I think that that way, any complaints coming in from the public, if it is anonymous, then the Director would have an eye on it. And if they deem that this is a serious matter, or rules are broken, or anything, whatever it could be, they could move forward with the next steps.
trustee Sukhara?
To comment on trustee Stanley's, yes, we do have something where we've added to what's the requirement in the legislation, our faith leadership section. It is not a requirement, that is something we've added. The portion about who can bring forward a complaint, it's specific, we can't change that.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote.
Ask for the vote to be deferred. I'm not sure what happened there, but...
The motion was on the floor from Tracy. It got seconded by trustee Sukhara.
Correct, and now I can ask for that vote to be deferred.
Do you have a timeline for the deferral?
Can I make a suggestion? Hoping for the deferral, possibly for the next board meeting, if it's possible. But I think that having a meeting in between that time, before the next committee of the whole, for example, where we can discuss things a little bit further, if it's possible, even like 15, 20 minutes, that would be great, just so we can touch base. And then hopefully, we can, you know, come forward unified in the next board meeting. I think that would be great.
Also defer to the next board meeting?
To the next board meeting.
Yep.
I'm gonna call for a vote on this. All in favor of deferring? Okay, opposed? Okay, motion defeated. So then, we are back to the original motion. The amended motion, yes?
Can I make an amendment to the amended motion? Because trustee Phillips mentioned that she would be willing to back it if the wording was that the complaint was brought forward to the Chair or Vice Chair and the Director of Education. Sorry to give you extra emails, Director Verrano. But if this will bring us to consensus, then it's just a couple of extra words. And if trustee Wiler would be willing, then we can move forward.
I would be willing to that minor change, because the Director of Education is already there under who can submit, so I don't have concern with that. What I would say is, in relation to this motion being on the floor this evening, there is a review cycle at the bottom of the code of conduct, and it does come up this school year again as part of our policy review. And I would entertain that when it comes up for review in this cycle, that it would go to governance for a full governance meeting to, you know, further discuss it. We have the opportunity through our process to review it annually, and it is on the board policy review for this year as well.
Are you in favor of the slight adjustment at this time? Okay. So, I'm just, that would be under the notice of alleged breach, then? So...
And that is on the formal?
She read it, it's just a matter, it's just on the website.
Would we end the motion where we say complaints are sent to the Chair and Director of Education in the couple of preambles on the website? Because the code of conduct under the formal does say that if you were to do anything as Chair, or the Chair, not necessarily you, but would also copy the Director of Education. So adding that to the website would allow the general public to understand that if they were submitting it to the Chair, they would also copy the Director of Education? Would that suffice in those three places?
I think it should be in writing as well, not just the website, because if it's in writing that any complaints coming forward that are given to the Chair and the Director to determine its validity and so forth, or determine next steps, if it's not in writing, for me, it doesn't exist, in my opinion. Having it on the website, yes, it's great, but I think having it in policy is very important as well.
Through you, Madam Chair, it is in the policy under page five, that when there's a notice provide, a copy is also provided to the Board's Director of Education.
I understand a copy is brought to the Director, but the Director is not necessarily involved in determining its validity and whether to move forward, or determine if this is something that needs to move forward or not. And that's what I'm looking for in order to feel comfortable with this.
Through you, Madam Chair, if I may. Just, just trustee Stanley raised an issue earlier just around removing power from trustees. And I think that the code of conduct as it's written, I believe, does empower the trustees, because it's your process. So once your process is enabled, you are able to move forward with that through an informal process, and then, if necessary, a formal process. So that does provide that level of empowerment. I don't think it's in your code of conduct and through the ministry as well in those compliance requirements that you would want me to be, myself, or the Director of Education, per se, to be determining if the code of conduct towards yourselves is valid or not. So I appreciate that I'd be copied on that, and of course, we'd have a conversation around it. And I think that should remain as is. But you certainly, I don't think the decision power should be given to the Director of Education in this case. I think that will disempower the Board of Trustees in their own right.
Okay, do you have a suggested amendment to read out for us? Motion?
That the Board of Trustees approve the changes to Policy 2007, Board Members' Code of Conduct as presented, and to amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or the Vice Chair and the Director of Education.
What do we think about that? Okay.
And just to add one point, just to include that, that is very consistent with the fraud of an accountability line information on the front page, that it is consistent, that it does go to the Chair and/or Vice Chair and the Director of Education. So I think you have some consistent language there as well.
Okay, then I'm going to call for a vote on the amended motion that was just read. So... Pardon? Yeah, so Tracy, you put it forward, and I'll need a seconder. Bob, okay, okay, right, okay. Okay, so all those in favor? We've got it? Okay, and opposed?
Requested in the beginning.
No, you didn't.
I didn't request it. No, but I said I wanted a recorded vote. I wanted a recorded vote.
Is there any objection from the group to have a recorded vote?
Thank you.
Okay, are you able to do that? Okay. Okay. Moving on to 12.1, notice of motion. So as per our policies, normally, this is considered read. Wiler?
OCSTA asked us to advocate for our role and the, the role of a trustee, local representation.
Point of order, I'm sorry. Our bylaws say that a motion should not be open for discussion at the meeting where it is introduced. So we're violating our bylaw by going into a discussion about this motion right now.
Fair enough, I was gonna move that we open the floor for discussion. I was trying to give some context as to why I was gonna move to open up the floor for discussion this evening.
Okay, that's fine, fair enough.
Yep. So, given the sensitivity and the timeliness, I think a month too late, I'd like to open the floor for discussion to discuss and vote on this this evening.
Okay. Can I get a seconder of that motion? Trustee Garen? Okay. Consensus?
All right, wouldn't we have to do first a motion to accept motions from the floor? Because since this is not an actual motion that is supposed to be coming up right now, then it is just a topic of discussion. And typically speaking, we're not supposed to accept motions from the floor unless we have done a motion to accept motions from the floor.
Is that the case when there have already been motions that happened in the meeting? That's my understanding, since we already had motions that came up, that we wouldn't need to do that?
You have to accept motions from the floor for this particular agenda topic, because this is not up for approval, it is just for information only. So in order to make any motions about it, then you would have to do a motion to accept motions on the floor regarding this topic.
trustee Sukhara?
I move that we accept motions from the floor.
Okay, seconded by trustee Garen? Okay. Do we have consensus? Okay, okay. Now, trustee Wiler? Yeah, because now you're, you've moved, and trustee Garen has seconded the discussion. trustee Phillips?
Will we be provided a copy of the letter before it's sent out?
Of course, I will draft and share for feedback, and you would receive the copy before it was sent.
And just to follow up on that, are trustees able to provide any input, some ideas of what to include in the letter?
Absolutely, that would be welcomed. trustee Stanley?
So I have, I have a couple of concerns with this motion. To begin with, the preamble, the "whereas's", there's some factual inaccuracies. And I understand that the minister's comments have changed somewhat over time, but we have to keep up to date with his latest statements. And so the, for example, the motion says that the Minister of Education has publicly stated he is quote-unquote 100% looking at the elimination of the trustee position. he is quote unquote, 100% looking at the elimination of the trustee position. We now know that is not correct for Catholic boards. The Minister of Education has clarified that we will retain trustee positions in Catholic boards, but instead, he will be shifting the focus to be entirely on denominational and religious issues. If we expect that the minister is going to take our letter seriously, we have to get his comments accurate. So that needs to be amended to begin with. Secondly, I'm not sure if I can support the tone of this letter in the sense that I suspect the minister is going to be receiving letters of this nature from every school board across the province. Basically, if I was a minister, I would think, and this is consistent with the way he's framed trustees lately, I would say this is another bunch of trustees whining to keep their job despite their abuse of taxpayer money, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not saying I agree with the minister's characterization of trustees, but I suspect that's what he would think when he saw this letter saying, keep our jobs, save us, we're really good, trust us. So therefore, I think it would be much more productive if Waterloo Catholic leaned into our reputation for leadership on this topic, as we try to on every topic, and say, we understand that the Minister of Education has a new vision for trustees. In what way can Waterloo Catholic be part of shaping that new vision for trustees, rather than just saying, let's keep things the way they are, because the minister's made it very clear that he does not want to keep things the way they are anymore for a host of reasons? So instead of just asking, begging for the minister to keep things as they are, let's reshape this a little bit to be proactive and say, we want to work together to create a new understanding of trustees. And as Catholics, we should be very, actually somewhat excited, I certainly am, to have a renewed focus on denominational religious issues. Because for me, that's something I've always thought we don't do enough of. So I'm actually very heartened by the minister's suggestion that we focus more on that. But again, maybe other trustees have different thoughts on that matter. Nevertheless, I think it's important that we reach out to the minister in a proactive way and say, let's work together, and we'll envision a new type of trustee and position. And that is actually what might get our letter read and taken seriously.
Thank you for your comment, trustee Wyler.
Yeah. I think the motion before us this evening, so I thank you for your comments and thoughts, trustee Stanley, because I do think it is reform that they're looking for, especially in the more recent comments. And so perhaps, to your point around being proactive and leading the way to suggest what that reform could look like, perhaps it's still, you know, directing Chair Craft to action something, perhaps a letter, but with the change in the tone, to your point, changing the wording, advocating for the value and the importance, et cetera, and changing it more to wording like leadership and proactive and reform. I think we could reach the same objective of giving Chair Craft the ability to write a letter, framing it differently in our motion to get at what I think perhaps would be better and well-received today, given some of the more recent comments. And I think we, again, we could all participate in the drafting, the reviewing, the ideas on that letter, and we would still achieve the same objective, but by changing that last sentence to reflect more the tone that we think we would like to see. And I think your comments are well-taken, and I think that would be better received.
Trustee Cuff.
So I fundamentally agree with trustee Stanley's comments, because quite frankly, the status quo right now, the trustee role, the attendance in particular kills me, and some of these other changes that have happened. However, my concern is the fact that in our bylaws, it actually says that we cannot do huge changes to somebody else's motion. Basically, the person has to take the motion back and then bring it back forward. Because changing the tone, while I agree that it's still directing the Chair to write a letter, it is a distinctly different tone, saying that we want to help you reform the trustee role. We're not going to emphasize the fact that we represent community voices, because quite frankly, he knows the statistics the same as us, where when we were initially elected, how Oxta informed us that over half of trustees are just acclaimed. You know, he knows that. He has those statistics in front of him. So claiming that we're the community voice, that we're doing governance, he is absolutely right to point out that some school boards are focusing on lesson plans and things like that. And to have taken over some of the school boards, saying, well, they're not balancing the budget. Why are they not balancing the budget when everybody else is able to balance it? So we're not, it is a very different tone to simply say, well, we here, we have always balanced the budget. We're great here, you know? We want to help you reform, so that we can keep our Catholic identity. Because as it stands right now, we are, quite frankly, trustees are bottom-of-the-barrel politicians. And the whole fact that we have to take attendance, and then you can be removed from your seat because, for whatever, I know there's actual reasons, but, you know, when I say for whatever reason, the fact is no other elected representative can actually be removed from their seat. We're the only elected representatives. So do we really want to move forward like this and try to just hobble along, saying, well, we're trustees, we're important? No, I want to help with the reformation and then to retain the Catholic identity of our school board and to ensure that they are keeping the Catholic identities in the schools. And that's a very different letter than what is being proposed here.
Trustee Sikora? No? You didn't have anything? Okay. Trustee Stanley?
Might I just suggest, then, that we bring this letter back at the next meeting? And for two reasons. One, to comply with our bylaws, because trustee Cuff is correct that a substantial change to a motion requires a new motion. And second, it will give us more time to hopefully hear some more information about the minister's vision before we jump the gun and assume what he's thinking when we don't know exactly yet. So I would propose that the Chair bring this same revised letter forward back at the next meeting, and we should be able to have consensus and pass that, I'd imagine. Okay.
Trustee Phillips?
I would concur with that also, too, because during that time, during that month, we will be able to see some samples and some ideas of some of the great ideas that were brought forward today. I definitely agree, having it reflecting what the Minister of Education is saying is a great idea. And I am more than happy to move on this quickly in the next board meeting, you know, assuming that we were all on the same page and we all agree with the letter. So this might be a great idea, and I'm sure between now and then, there might be some more comments coming forward, I assume. But I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Trustees, Garen and then Francis.
May I care? I think that the timeliness of this communication is actually preeminent to the actual perfection in the verbiage. I don't have any disagreement with comments that have been made, but I actually think that they could be, I don't think that's a fundamental change to the motion. For me, it is just a choice of verbiage and some of the tone around that, but it's not opposed to what's already in there. So I would prefer that this be expedited rather than waiting another 30 days.
Trustee Francis?
Yes. I'd like to concur with what trustee Stanley had mentioned about changing the tone, putting it forward that we are not talking just about governance. He knows that. He has the numbers for that. We are talking more about collaboration. We are talking more about what is his vision? How do we work along with him so that that vision can be fulfilled? We don't want to go in opposition. We don't want to go saying that, you know, we are wanting our job, we're wanting trustees to be there, stuff like that. He already knows all that. We're talking about changing the tone to make it more of a collaborative kind of effort, that trustees are there to collaborate with him and make this position, make the boards, and make the Ministry of Education a place where, you know, people can feel trusted, can know what is happening, and they feel confident that whatever the board is doing, whatever the trustees are doing, does have value. So.
Sikora?
Just one comment about the "whereas" clause and the 100% looking. He is changing, you know, all the time, yes, what he's saying. That wouldn't be in the letter. This is just a reason for putting forward the motion. And I agree, we want to expedite this, and if we feel that it is necessary to try to speed it up, we could have a special board meeting before the next, like before the Committee of the Whole, to sort of move this forward. We could all forward some ideas. A lot of these are what Oxta is already advocating for, and the more people that advocate on the same topic, often, oftentimes, not always, is more impactful. We want to have an impactful letter.
Okay. I think I've heard from pretty much everyone. Is there anyone else that wanted to share anything? I think that, I appreciate everybody's thoughts and ideas, and I like your suggestion, trustee Sikora, that it could be a possibility of expediting, you know, sooner than later. I don't think we're going to solve this tonight, so, but maybe we say the next board meeting with the possibility of expediting that. If, right? Committee of the Whole? Yeah. Yeah. Trustee Phillips?
I just wanted to comment, too, that I think that we'd be in a different situation as far as expediting, had he not made the comments that Catholic trustees are going to be left alone, and that he's going to be focusing on the public school board. So that kind of gives a little bit of comfort there. I do agree, sooner rather than later, of course, but assuming that we cannot have a special board meeting before the Committee of the Whole, then Committee of the Whole would be fine with me, too.
Trustee Wyler? Trustee Sikora?
Yeah. Just one quick comment. It would be worthwhile to withdraw, otherwise, we can't bring this forward for another year.
Okay.
All right. Would it be tabling the motion, then? Is that an option that we can do? Where we table the motion until the next meeting? So we can bring it back? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. I just wanted, I wanted to clarify to make sure.
Sorry. Just to clarify, your motion, Tracy, right, that technically, we didn't actually vote on, was whether or not we were discussing Renee's motion. So technically speaking, your motion actually shouldn't be withdrawn. We actually, since we all partook at the discussion, then we should simply, Renee should simply say, okay, do we have consensus? And then we vote yes on that one. And then your motion, Chair Craft. Basically, it didn't have to come forward today anyways. Nobody moved it. So you can just hold on to it until the next meeting. So no withdrawing motions, because that'll actually put us, as opposed to our bylaws.
Good point, because we did discuss, if you withdraw the motion, then what happens to that discussion we just had? You put the motion to put it on the floor. So I think it's okay. Thank you. Good collaboration on that. Okay. So I don't actually think there's anything to do. You put it on the, okay. Okay. But we did that. We did do that. Yes, we did. Yes. Yes. So I added, I don't actually think there's anything to be done. You put it on the floor, we discussed it, and the discussion's over, so. No, because this was for the next meeting anyways, right? So, okay. Okay. So then, moving on, announcements, there's a bunch of them listed there, towards end of September and into October. I'm not going to read all of those under 13. Our next upcoming meeting on 14.1 is the Committee of the Whole, where we're going to be getting an update on the MYSP, Pastoral Plan Launch Equity Action and Student Achievement Plan Review. So I'm moving then to 15.1 to confirm decisions made tonight.
It was moved by trustee Stanley and seconded by trustee Sikora that the agenda for Monday, September 22, 2025, be now approved as amended, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Wyler and seconded by trustee Sikora that the consent agenda, Board of Trustees, and the recommendations contained therein from items 3.1 to 3.2 be now approved, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Doherty Masters and seconded by trustee Wyler that the Governance Committee approve the Governance Minutes from September 8, 2025, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Sikora and seconded by trustee Garen that item 3.4 Governance Minutes, September 8, 2025, Approval of Recommendations, be now approved. To clarify, approving this recommendation is not approving the Code of Conduct policy. This item will be discussed later in the, under item 10.2 of the agenda. By recorded vote, in favor, trustees Doherty, Master, Wyler, Francis, Garen, Sikora, Stanley, Craft, opposed trustees Cuff and Phillips, motion carried by majority. It was moved by trustee Phillips and seconded by trustee Stanley that the Board of Trustees recess at 8:27 PM. By recorded vote, in favor, trustees Wyler, Doherty, Masters, Francis, Garen, Phillips, Sikora, Stanley, and Craft, opposed trustee Cuff, motion carried by majority. It was moved by trustee Sikora and seconded by trustee Stanley that the Board of Trustees move back into a public meeting at 8:32 PM, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Wyler and seconded by trustee Doherty Masters that the Board of Trustees reviewed Board Policy 2002, Governing Style, and find that the board is in compliance, carried by consensus, with a recommendation to send this policy to governance. It was moved by trustee Sikora and seconded by trustee Wyler that the Board of Trustees reviewed Board Policy 3006, CEO Compensation and Benefits, and find that the board is in compliance, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Wyler and seconded by trustee Sikora that the motion be tabled, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Wyler and seconded by- It was moved by Trustee Wyler and seconded by Trustee Sikora that the meeting be extended past 9 PM, carried by consensus. It was moved by Trustee Wyler and seconded by Trustee Sikora that the Board of Trustees approve the changes to Policy 2007, Board Members' Code of Conduct as presented, and to amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or Vice Chair. It was moved by Trustee Stanley and seconded by Trustee Phillips that the Board of Trustees defer this motion to the Board of Trustees meeting on October 27th, 2025. By recorded vote, in favor, Trustees Phillips and Stanley; opposed, Trustees Wyler, Doherty Masters, Francis, Garen, Sikora, and Craft, motion defeated. It was moved by Trustee Wyler and seconded by Trustee Sikora that the Board of Trustees approve the changes to Policy 2007, Board Members' Code of Conduct as presented, and to amend the motion to include locations on the website to communicate how a member of the public can bring forward complaints to the Chair and/or the Vice Chair and the Director of Education. By recorded vote, in favor, Trustees Wyler, Doherty Masters, Francis, Garen, Sikora, and Craft; opposed, Trustees Phillips and Stanley, motion carried by majority. It was moved by Trustee Sikora and seconded by Trustee Garen that motions be accepted from the floor, carried by consensus. It was moved by Trustee Wyler and seconded by Trustee Garen that the Notice of Motion Letter to the Minister of Education be open for discussion, carried by consensus.
Chair. Listening, I didn't catch the motion to approve Recommendations under 5.1, which was the capital priorities, which we do want to submit.
My apologies, I missed that one. It was moved by Trustee Garen and seconded by Trustee Wyler that staff be directed to submit Capital Priorities Program Requests for Funding in the following order: New North Cambridge CES, St. Bernadette CES Replacement School, Monsignor Doyle CSS Edition, St. David CSS Edition, Monsignor Haller CES Edition, New Dune South CES, carried by consensus.
And also for 10.2, I saw you had the amended motion, but there was a motion to initially bring it to the table. Yeah, so there was an amendment, but it had to come to the table first. It had to be moved and seconded before you can amend it. It did? Okay. Yeah, it went through multiple iterations. Yeah, okay. Very good. Thanks.
Okay, moving to our closing prayer. O risen Lord, you've entrusted us with the responsibility to help form a new generation of disciples and apostles through the gift of our Catholic schools. As disciples of Christ, may we educate and nurture hope in all learners to realize their full potential to transform God's world. May our Catholic schools truly be at the heart of the community, fostering success for each by providing a place for all. May we and all whom we lead be discerning believers formed in the Catholic faith community, effective communicators, reflective and creative thinkers, self-directed, responsible lifelong learners, collaborative contributors, caring family members, and responsible citizens. Grant us the wisdom of your Spirit so that we might always be faithful to our responsibilities. We make this price through Christ our Lord and our men. I need a motion to adjourn. Trustee Phillips, Trustee Stanley, consensus?